So I’m going to call to order the regular meeting of the Fairfax -- excuse me, council members, excuse me, excuse me, call to order the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. We’re at the Fairfax Women’s Club, 46th Park Road, and it’s Wednesday, August 7th, and it’s actually 7:01 PM. We did have a special meeting to conduct interviews of a candidate for our Climate Action Committee, and I’m pleased to announce we appointed Christopher Lang to join the Climate Action Committee. So with that, let’s do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the faith of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I’d like to do a roll call vote, please, Hannah?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Goddard is not present. Councilmember Lacks?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
And Mayor Kohler?
Here. Thank you. And I already jumped the gun and did the announcement of the special meeting. So I’d like someone to make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting, please.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? So I’ll read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of councilmembers, staff, or members of the public to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend the rule. And before we start, I’d like to say I’m really opening the meeting in honor of the victims of the Gilroy, Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso mass shootings. That’s terrible tragedies. So with that, I’d like to do the announcements. Vacancies on boards and commissions, applications are available at Town Hall and on the town website. For more information, contact right now our deputy town clerk or visit www.townoffairfax.org. And for those of you who haven’t met her, Hannah Politzer is our deputy town clerk for a few months. So feel free to contact Hannah. And I believe they can contact you through the town clerk’s email. Okay, so I -- may I borrow a pen for just a second? So the Climate Action Committee has now two, up to two vacancies. The Open Space Committee has two vacancies. The Tree Committee has one vacancy. Volunteer Board has one vacancy. The Parks and Recreation Commission has one vacancy. Fairfax Food Pantry, Saturdays 9 to 11:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed, and just a reminder, there’s a lot of volunteers that come in the morning. There’s only a few stay to button it up, so if you’re wanting to volunteer anytime, you’re welcome. But if you can come later, around 10:30, 11:00 o’clock, that would be helpful. And please tell anyone who needs food, no ID needed, no proof needed, please just show up, we’re happy to help. Chipper days, the last ones, we just had August 3rd, and now August 10th is the last one. And please check our website for more details about the location and possible pickup service. And did any of the other councilmembers want to have any type of announcement? Okay.
Good.
All right. I need a pen, just one sec. Oh, thank you. This is dead. All right. Open time for public expression. This is to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please approach the podium and state your name and address, which are optional. Depending on the number of speakers, individuals have two to three minutes to speak, four to five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So with that, I’ll open up open time. Please approach the podium.
Cindy Swift, Fairfax. I wanted to publicly recognize the Fairfax Parlor of the Native Sons tonight for replacing the Manor train sign at the Manor bus stop. Until 1941, the electric trains left that station for the ferry building in San Francisco, and the replica sign that has been there is a reminder of those days. The sign has been in disrepair for the last several years until the Native Sons came and replaced it recently, I think in the last couple of months. So this is only one example of what the Native Sons do for the community. They’re responsible for the pavilion lighting. There’s a plaque in the park on a stone recognizing them for that. And as you travel into town from the east, you can thank the Native Sons for the lighted Fairfax sign in the parcade. So thank you, and thanks to the Native Sons.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive, and your representative to the Commission on Aging, with my quick report. Commission on Aging is pretty quiet this month, but the, in September, they start back up with a presentation on High Cap on the 5th. But mostly, I wanted to mention a few things about age-friendly Fairfax. And I want to start with a big thank you to Mayor Kohler, and Garrett, and all of you for quickly putting up an age-friendly bench at the bus stop for older folks and disabled folks who need that temporarily. So thank you very much for moving so quickly on that, we really appreciate it. Age-friendly Fairfax has been interfacing with the Cascade Canyon Firewise Committee, in part by looking for volunteers who can help older adults with yard clearing for fire prevention. On July 28th, I wore a bit of two hats. We had a meeting here at the Women’s Club on July 28th where six or seven of the local Fairfax Firewise communities came together. All of those, there were 17 of us who were present, and all of those volunteers are interested in forming neighborhood response groups, or NRGs, with block captains, along with their Firewise work, in large part to help identify where there are people in need, vulnerable individuals in the community, whether based on age or disability or whatever. So we are really excited about that overlap. Clearly, people will need support, older folks will need support in the event of an evacuation, or a need to shelter in place, or a power shutdown. So if you are aware in your community of an old, of a vulnerable neighbor, please be sure to reach out to your local Firewise group, or you can contact me through the age-friendly website at the, or link at the town website, and I can connect you to a member in the community, so we can get, become more aware of who, who needs that, may need that kind of service. The Age-friendly Fairfax forums will start up again in September. I mentioned that last month, the final arrangements will be the talk on the 13th. And Breakfast with Friends is on the 21st this month at Barefoot Cafe. Also, the task force meets this Friday at 9:15 at Bennett House, if any folks want to join us.
Thank you, Jody. Yeah.
Hi, Valerie Hood, 5G free, save Fairfax. We’re having an event this weekend, August 10th, with our Speaker Daphna Tackover, an Israeli lawyer who successfully saved Israeli government, oh, who successfully sued the Israeli government, proving the medical harm from Wi-Fi, removing it from Israeli children’s schools. This talk will be given at the San Geronimo Valley Cultural Center in San Geronimo, just a five-minute drive over the hill from here, going west on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard from Fairfax. The talk is called “Wireless Radiation: Keeping Safer in a Wireless World.” Topics to be covered include R2G, 3G, 4G, 5G, microwave cell technologies, cell towers and Wi-Fi, and microwave smart meters harmful. What is 5G, and should we be concerned about it? Why are children more vulnerable? What can we do to reduce exposure and protect ourselves and our families? To learn more about Ms. Tackover, a leading expert on wireless technology radiation, health effects, go to her website, WeAreTheEvidence. This free event will be on Saturday at 6:30 at the San Geronimo Valley Cultural Center. I know there are a number of people watching this tonight because they contacted me before, so I hope you’ve got the details. Ms. Tackover has a technology background from her service in the Israeli Defense Forces as a telecommunication and computer officer. She has invited us to invite you, the council, to come and hear her speak. She has also offered her time to meet with you privately. You can contact her through me or at her website, WeAreTheEvidence. The website is actually wearetheevidence.org, and it’s an advocacy organization for the protection of the rights of people who have been injured by wireless technology radiation. Daphna led a Supreme Court case in Israel to ban the use of Wi-Fi in schools, which led to the strictest limitations in the world on Wi-Fi in schools today. Unfortunately, she’s been challenged by the Israeli government, as you can imagine. But the fact that she was able to prove harm makes her a very reliable witness, and I do hope you will follow up on her offer, because she’s a very, very wise person who’s also had her life threatened for doing this, and, you know, somebody who could probably give the town a little help. A little follow-up from the last meeting, and that is, I asked if a task force could be put together in order to take, to look at the symptoms that we will see after the rollout, and never heard anything back from anyone, and I’m wondering if I will. We have a really great advocate in our town, a leading expert on GMO technology, and is now becoming an expert on 5G and other wireless technologies, because she sees so much in her practice, and all the alternative doctors do. The problem is that regular doctors have no clue, they’ve never done the research, they’ve never done the reading, and they don’t know. So I’m just asking you to please consider putting together a task force she has offered to do, to help the Fairfax Council in this, and it would be a wonderful and a record-setting thing to do. So I don’t know if you can say yea or nay, but I appreciate your listening, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. Thank you for hearing me. I’m here asking for the fourth time that something be done by the town to remedy the ultra-bright LED lights that are triangulated outside of my home. I’ve done some research, and I have --
Copy, sweetie. One for you, as well.
Yeah. So the AMA has put out warnings about the dangers of LED lights on the human body, and their basic message is cool it and dim it. The higher, they’re saying no greater than 3,000 Kelvin CTE color temperature, the higher the CTE, the more blue, the brighter the white of the light, and the more glare. An incandescent bulb has a CTE of 2,400 Kelvin. Before electric light, we burned wood and candles with a CTE of about 1,800, no blue, almost. What we have now is very different. The AMA says that LED street lighting can damage the retina if not properly shielded, and ours are not. Other issue addressed by them is the impact on human circadian rhythmicity. Recently, it’s been linked to poor sleep, obesity, diabetes, cancers, and mood disorders, also mortality events on migrating birds. LED is five times more effective at suppressing melatonin at night than the old sodium vapor lights. Street lighting is an important component of light pollution. The Milky Way is no longer visible to one-third of humanity. Eighty percent of North Americans can no longer see the Milky Way. The city of Davis, with a population of 66,000, installed LED lighting in 2014. They received 40 comments from residents, 36 of which were complaints. They replaced the lights. They took down the lights at a cost of $325,000 to put dimmer lights in, and they listened to the people. That included labor and new fixtures. There’s an analysis of their action. The city of Davis took the important step of installing a pilot test of the new LED fixtures, but unfortunately, did not actively engage broad public feedback to accurately ascertain their opinion until after the process began. For any survey of public preferences to be effective, an organized program to solicit input from a broad cross-section of the public must be undertaken prior to implementation. Ideally, a lighting consultant should be engaged to develop survey questions and coordinate a guided tour of the installation. In addition to viewing the various fixtures being considered, the public tour should demonstrate the lighting at a variety of illumination levels. Fixter types should be selected to include color temperature options, starting at 2,700 K CCT for all residential installations, and dimming should --
Deb, can you wrap it up?
I’m almost there. Should be demonstrated, and public should be asked, it should be used. City also engaged a lighting technology center. In conclusion, the city of Davis should be commended for listening to the residents once the installation was started, and having the courage to remedy the problems that were communicated. I’m asking the town of Fairfax to do the same, and I’m not the only one who’s filed a complaint. The ratio to the 1885 would be four here, four complaints, same ratio. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, did you want to speak?
I did. I do. Mark Bell, Dominga Avenue. When we complained about the noise from the farmer’s market, it was put on the consent calendar, and you as a council refused to pull it. We were guaranteed there would be no drums there. There have been drums there at least four occasions. We were told that the noise from the amplified music would be regulated by the town noise ordinance. This evening, for example, I clocked the noise at 75 to 80 decibels on the sidewalk, while the code for a commercial area is 60. That’s three to four times louder than what is allowable. This is virtually every week. They’ve been in violation of their use permit virtually every week, and we’re really tired of it. We have the doors closed, the windows closed, and for example, this evening, we’re listening to some guy sounding like he’s got food poisoning being amplified. And so, I don’t know, you don’t seem to want to do anything about it, but I think you should. You had the opportunity, you told me that the woman doesn’t make much money at the market, so you weren’t going to pull the item. That’s a reason? Really, it’s disheartening. And I look at the 5G ordinance, and you’re all like, oh, if it’s 50 decibels from the origin of the thing, oh, that, that’s something. But when it’s 75 to 80 decibels from the sidewalk, that’s not an issue? That’s about it.
Thank you, Mark. Garrett, can we look into that with Kelly?
Sure, but I believe he’s measuring from the sidewalk next to the band.
Okay, thank you.
What?
Okay, thank you.
He said he believes Mark was measuring that near the band, the sidewalk near the band. Exactly.
Okay.
That’s what he says.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Frank Eger, 13 Meadowway, Fairfax, Mayor and Council. I’m really concerned about the direction of your consent calendar. You’re making it very difficult and almost impossible for people to speak to items on a consent calendar. Last month, there were 14 items, a number of them, folks should have been able to speak to, they were not. I spoke to one, I waited to the end of the meeting. This month, there’s 17 items on a consent calendar, only four items on a regular agenda. And having, if you pull a consent item now, you have to wait until the end of the meeting, it could be midnight before you get to speak on an item. In the past, Fairfax always put the pulled consent items right after the consent calendar, so folks who were there for those items could speak right away and not have to wait till 11 or 12 o’clock at night.
Thank you.
That’s a thing.
So Ling, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ling Shenber, 63 Dominga. So first, I wanted to second the, what she was talking about was the lights. I think it’s really super important, those lights are really, really bad. And please do something, do what Davis did, that’s really, would be a great thing. And, well, about the farmer’s market, I wanted to support what Mark was saying, it’s just really pretty dreadful, that you can hear it, with everything closed in our house, and you can just hear it all over the place. It’s not, it’s not right. There is something in the sound ordinance that states that if it’s, if the sound has speech content or intellectual content like music, then you should lower the limit by five dBs, which is quite a bit, and that’s both for the night limits and the day limits. So for night, instead of 60, it would be 50, instead of 50, it would be 45, and during, the opposite, sorry. During the night, instead of 40, it’s 35, which is really inaudible, and during the day, instead of 50, it’s 45. That’s for residential areas. So the, when we talked to the police about this, they were saying that it’s too confusing for them, they don’t want to have to make the decision whether it has speech content or whatever, it’s just not clear enough for them. So I’m asking you to give them clear directions to apply what the sound ordinance says, because the sound ordinance is there to protect us, and we need to use it to get that protection. So can you please talk to the police and tell them to apply those five dB reduction, because that will change the scenarios quite a bit? Yes?
Thank you. Garrett, can you please talk to the chief about that? Garrett? Thank you.
Yeah? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak in open time for matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, I’m bringing it back. So we’re moving on to the consent calendar, and I want to mention that if there’s a couple people that want to just give comments on a consent calendar item, you will have an opportunity to do that. If there’s a number of people that want to, we would pull it. But let’s first ask the council if they have any questions of staff. I just want to point out, there’s a supplement on item two on the minutes, there were revisions made, and there’s a supplement on Agenda Item 11, and Garrett, maybe you can mention what that is.
So 11, that’s the second reading of the 5G, in essence, we refer to as a 5G ordinance. What you have is what we gave you, it just reflects clerical changes from the fact that the FCC has renumbered its regulations. So what before used to be 1.40001 is now 1.6100, and so we changed that in about 13 places in the ordinance. So that’s kind of a clerical change, but that’s what we put on the dais before you.
Okay, thank you. So basically, the FCC has changed the numbering of some of this, so what we did was make sure that we have the right numbers that we’re referring to. Is that correct?
That’s correct.
Okay. So let me ask if any members of the council have questions on items, or a comment on an item on consent? John?
I do, yeah. On item number 15, which is Pavilion Seismic Retrofit, and I am very pleased to see this item that, and, you know, it’s great, I mean, it costs Fairfax a little bit more, but we’ll be able to leverage that and basically look at a seismic retrofit. I am concerned, however, on the preliminary drawings that show the back steps and the ADA ramp, I think, which is driving the changes there. Unfortunately, result in the preliminary drawings that are in this thing, you kind of need a magnifying glass to see it at this scale, but it’s Attachment B, Sheet A1 of the specification drawings. I went and measured the slope of the existing ramp, and yes, it’s out of compliance for current ADA specs, and what’s proposed is to put a ramp straight up the middle of the whole area, which currently is one of the better stages in the Fairfax Festival, in my opinion, anyway, it’s one of the three stages. And it would pretty much destroy that as a venue, because it puts a ramp straight up the middle of it. And if you, basically, I went out and measured it, and if you use the existing spot of the ramp that’s there, and then just went from the outside of the curve on the first part to the outside of the curve of the second part, you’ve got over 90 feet to do the rise of four feet, and I think that’ll, that’ll comply with ADA specs, so we don’t have to destroy that area, because it’s very functional right now, and it won’t be very functional at all. And I’ll be happy to work together with the manager.
Okay, thank you, John, for doing all that research. And we may hear more from the public, but I think I would direct staff to work with John to make those changes to the design. But anybody else have questions of staff on items on consent? I just want to mention that I want to thank staff for putting together the resolution I asked for in support of Senator Feinstein’s bill S2012, which is similar to Anna S. U.'s bill to overturn the FCC rulings, which are so problematic. So thank you very much for doing that. Peter, I’m sorry, did you have something to say or question?
Yeah, I also wanted to echo that, and I’m also really grateful that our two senators have signed on and sponsored that in the Senate. And there is, I would like to pull an item from consent, item 11. I understand that we have a really packed agenda, but I think it’s a better policy whenever we have an ordinance to actually have it as a public item in case people still want to comment on it, so.
Well, let’s see, let’s see if there are a number of people that want to comment on it before we make that decision, if that’s all right. Okay, so I’m going to open up to the public. Did you have a comment, or a question, or request to pull an item?
Mayor Frank Eger again. I’m here to speak on three items.
Okay.
Number six is the Meadowway Bridge, which will ultimately cost over $2 million. Number 11 is the one that Peter just brought up. That’s the 5G small cell ordinance.
Okay.
And number 15 is the seismic retrofit to the pavilion.
Okay, well, let me ask one question of the audience sitting here. How many people would like to speak on item 11? So there’s quite a few, so I think we should pull that item, and are there, is there, I think, I’m sorry, you’re out of order. I’m saying we should pull that item for discussion. So if you could also not refrain from talking in the back of the room, I would appreciate that. And let’s hear your comments on item six, Mr. Eger, and also item 15, please.
Yes, item six is, is an additional, you’re spending an additional $105,000 to pay a consultant to redesign retaining walls out there. There are two retaining walls that are there right now. One was put in place, was paid for by FEMA after the 2005 flood, and the other one was put in place, was built by the Tong family, who are on a corner of Meadow and Cascade. They built that in the mid-1960s. And, and now you’re going to pay someone to redo those walls that have held up all the -- And now you're going to pay someone to redo those walls that have held up all these years. It seems to be a waste of money, but I believe you need to have some public comment on this issue of the new retaining walls. I understand that the consultant is going to respond to Caltrans. I've never seen anything from Caltrans, I've never seen anything in your agenda packet from Caltrans. And I'd like to know what your consultant is responding to at Caltrans. I don't know, how do you find that out? I guess my only option may be a Public Records Act request of the town, or Public Records Act request of Caltrans, one or the other, but I.
Can I ask, Garrett, did we post that information on the bridge's website?
What exactly information are we looking to post? You mean the redesign concept?
The Caltrans information that we got from Caltrans.
Oh, you mean like their approval of the additional work?
Right.
Oh. No, I don't think we post those, but we can. I mean, it would be.
I think we, why don't we do that?
Sure, they're just the 76s and everything, but that's fine.
Let's go ahead and do that. And then just one, one comment, Mr. Egger, is we have had workshops talking about the retaining wall, and I believe you participated in at least one of those. So we have had discussion on that.
Yeah, your consultant will be up to $800,000 now. You could replace the whole bridge for what you're paying the consultant.
Okay, and.
And one more thing, someone has dumped broken concrete from some construction job down off the bank and going down in the creek, it's laying on the side of the bank, on broken concrete or broken driveway or something. Just, at that location where they're going to redesign.
Okay, so when we do the repairs out there, can we remove that broken concrete as well?
We'll see, I don't, I don't know what's down there.
Or maybe Public Works can do that, let's check it out. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, somebody's dumping there.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
So, but, but, when I read the staff report, it said that the consultant's going to comment to concerns that Caltrans had about the redesign. Is that what you're going to put on the website?
We'll put everything on the website. Caltrans has approved the design, they've approved the extra funding for the project, and so what we'll do is we'll just put all of it on online.
Well, that should be our practice, that's why we created that website, is to have information available for the public, so we'll do that, Frank.
So the redesign is in response to Caltrans' concerns about the project, is that correct?
No, I mean, we shouldn't go back and forth, but without pulling the item, basically, what we did is, the council may recall, back in January, you had a status update, I think in 2018, we had a status update and a consideration of a redesign of the retaining wall, from a long retaining wall to a half retaining wall, half riprap, more natural type of wall with riparian, better for the environment, better riparian habitat, better for the fish and so on. And so that's what the council said, yes, that sounds good, please approach Caltrans about the redesign. We did, Caltrans approved the design. Conceptually, they had approved it, but they formally approved it, and they formally allocated the funding for that redesign work, which is talked about in the staff report.
Okay, so we're.
Okay, so the.
So we're not going to go back and forth.
You don't have to go back and forth, I just like to make one final comment on it. That in effect, we're paying twice for retaining walls. We paid for it in 2005, now we're going to redo it again and pay for it again. The next item that I'll just speak to is item number 15, a seismic retrofit for the pavilion. That's a $2.5 million project.
Correct.
The last time we dug in a pavilion, we were putting, we were putting the sewer line down, and we ran into significant Native American artifacts.
That's why we have an MOU.
That's nice. So my question is, what will Fairfax do when skeletal remains are found in your excavations?
So Frank, we have an MOU with the State Historic Preservation Officer, the great Indian.
No, no, I'm asking you what you're going to do when they find skeletal remains.
We will work with those agencies when and if that occurs. We know it is a midden, and we're approaching it very carefully, and that's one of the reasons why this project has taken so long to get to this point.
How come I can't find that MOU on the website?
It actually, if I may not to go back and forth, let's be clear. All the agencies have approved what we refer to as the Archaeological Treatment Plan of how you handle anything that you may find as part of the project. The project was specifically designed to limit the amount of disturbance to the soil per FEMA, CALOES, the tribe, and State Historic Preservation Officer. We have all the agreements, all the agreements are actually attached to all the council approvals from the past meetings. If we're saying once the pavilion project gets going, we want to create a separate page and post all that stuff in one spot, we can do that. But I'm trying to be clear here, we have all the agency's approval, and we have committed, the council and the town committed to limit disturbance. And that's why it took so long to get all these agreements, because SHPO, FEMA, and the tribe weren't necessarily in all agreement of how something should be done. And you may recall, as part of that, we had to have the agreements in place to even take soil samples in order to determine that level of work. We did that, archaeologist was on site, pretty much for four soil samples, which were hand-drawn, hand-drilled, augured in order to do that. It's a pretty comprehensive project that is under lots of review. The archaeological presence for this project and review of the design, that's going to end up costing the town about $150,000, probably by, we're all said and done. So there's lots of review, there's lots of agreements approving exactly what to be done if something is discovered. However, we don't even have the preliminary plans approved off by any of the agencies, other than FEMA has indicated they're willing to fund the entire seismic retrofit of the project, which is actually a really good ding, thing. Basically, for another $200,000, $225,000, the town's leveraging about 1.4 million, or six times the amount. So I think that's all a good thing, very surprising. Originally, we thought we'd have to do lots of benefit cost analysis to FEMA, and just last week, they said, no, we've decided that you can move forward, get us a rough preliminary design, which is what this is, this is actually from a few years ago, get us cost estimates, and then we'll do the paperwork to commit the funding.
Okay, thank you. Frank, did you have further comments?
What was?
Okay, we're not going back and forth, just give us.
You don't have to go back and forth.
I would like to hear.
So I would like to see the results of their sifted soil, to see if there's any bone fragments in any of the soil that they ran through a sifter.
Thank you.
Have they run it through a sifter?
Frank, we've already explained, thank you.
Well, obviously, you don't want to talk about it, that's the way this council operates.
Frank, I think that's inappropriate allegation.
So again, we'll go ahead, I think it's already on there, but we'll go ahead and post it. Yes, there was a report prepared for all the soil samples, yes, it was reviewed by all the agencies, including the tribe, so it's all there, we're following all the rules and regulations in agreed upon agreement.
Okay, great. Maybe in the next few months, we should create a separate page for the pavilion, since it seems to be moving slowly, albeit, but we can have things in one place. Mark, did you have a comment on a consent calendar?
Are you pulling 11?
We are.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can talk about 11, right?
Okay, so did anyone else want to comment on something on consent that is not item 11? Okay, we're not doing item 11 right now, so I'm bringing it back.
Hi, I just have a question. Does this mean you're pulling item 11 and putting it later tonight, or in another time?
We're going to discuss that right now.
Oh, okay.
It will be tonight.
In that case, I just want to mention that, thank you, Peter, for offering, for suggesting that. The reason that would make sense is if a large number of our group who are not here right now could be here to comment.
Yeah.
And we've often gone after marijuana, which takes a tremendous amount of time, and we're here very late at night, so.
Well, I think, you know, we've had about nine meetings at the town level on this topic, and we have heard a lot, and a lot of people really care about cannabis that are here too.
Correct.
So we want to decide what makes sense.
So that's why I'm saying it doesn't have to be tonight, but I just wanted to let you know.
Well, I think it does have to be tonight, it's time to move this forward, and we appreciate everybody's thoughtful comment.
That's fine, it's just that a lot of us who would comment won't be here if it's really late, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, so bringing it back, I would make a suggestion, did you have another comment on consent? Not on item 11.
Okay, so can I ask, I have my daughter with me, and she can be probably asleep at that point.
Okay, we are, I'm sorry, you cannot comment on item 11.
Because we didn't get advance notice that you were going to do that.
Yes, yes, you did, because.
No, not before the meeting, we didn't.
Yes, it was on the agenda that was posted on Friday.
For public comment.
Consent calendar still has an option, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not arguing with you, you'll need to sit down. Thank you. So I'm bringing it back to the council.
It's so late, kids can't come, and no one's asked kids how they feel about.
I apologize.
No, I just want to go on record to say.
Thank you.
No one's asked them.
Thank you, bringing it back to the council.
I will.
How many people, excuse me, how many people are here to speak on cannabis? Quite a few. How many people are here to speak on 5G? Small cell, okay. With that, I would suggest that we move it after item 18, before item 19, 20, and 21. So not at the end of the agenda, but after cannabis, there's a lot more people here for that. Would someone agree or disagree or like to make a motion to that effect?
Madam Mayor, there might be another comment on the consent calendar?
No, I've already asked.
Oh, no, there is, there is. She answered affirmatively.
Okay, what, could you come to the podium, please? Thank you. What item did you want to speak on?
On number 17.
Okay. And, oh, you're here for the, I asked for this to be on here for you. Okay, so this is the Amazon Reuse Initiative.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Lund, and I'm on the Committee of Marin Residents, working on the Amazon to Reuse Boxes Initiative. For those of you who haven't been following the initiative, it is a move to ask Amazon to pick up and reuse their boxes and plastic mailers in Marin County. The Amazon boxes have been reused by eBay sellers and independent mail services for years. So now, we'd like to ask Amazon to please come pick up and reuse the boxes and the plastic mailers. The reason for the request is that the volume of discarded Amazon boxes and plastic mailers is huge, is huge, and taxing our recycling system and landfill. The goal here is to move away from single-use products and slow down the volume of cardboard and plastic being discarded. Many of you have already signed the petition that will go to Amazon. If you haven't, we really need your help. Conservation International has advised us to collect 10,000 signatures to show that there is widespread interest in Fairfax and other Marin counties in having Amazon reuse its packaging materials. Hundreds of Fairfax residents have signed the petition, both loyal and skeptical Amazon users, and 5,300 residents in Marin have signed the petition to date. So your help in this really matters. I'd like to ask, if you haven't signed the petition, that you can find the petition on change.org. You need to search for Amazon to reuse boxes, because there's a number of Amazon petitions, and you'll find the petition. This is a truly local initiative, and so important to keeping Fairfax and the other communities beautiful.
Thank you.
Bye.
Did you want to speak on a consent item?
Same issue.
Okay, great.
Valerie Hood, Fairfax. I would just like to say I support what's happening here, but I think it's a half-measure. Number one, I think we should stop ordering from Amazon. Amazon is putting out of business really good people who are trying to sell really good products. Not only that, they clog up our streets every single day with so many trips, not to mention people buy garbage all day long, spend money they don't even have. And I, if we are going to make a real statement, you know, plastic straws, you know, Amazon deliveries is like a mountain compared to a grain of sand, that would be a real statement for the Fairfax Council.
Thank you.
How you would do it, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so anybody else want to speak on an item on consent, not on item 11?
Hi, it's on item 15. I just want to say, it's something I don't know a lot about, and hearing what you guys were saying, it sounds like you're doing your due diligence and everything on it. I know also that it is a midden and shell mound, and so I just would request that, you know, whatever you can be made known to the public, so we can be informed and involved, and that the tribes who are part of that can be part of that and involved in that we can respect.
The tribes are part of it, and we'll be creating a separate page off our website in the near future to have information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So someone else want to speak on consent, or seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. First, regarding item 11, based on show of hands, not putting it at the end of the agenda, but after item 18, which is the cannabis item. Would anyone like to make a motion to support that?
Sure, I'll move to take item 11 off of consent and have it heard immediately after item 18.
Okay, would someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
And then.
Wait, wait, before you do that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that was Councilmember Lacks first, and second Ackerman.
And then, I think we need to approve the rest of the consent.
Right, don't forget about the supplements, though, for item two.
So for the, I'll also like to move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, including the supplement to item number two with corrections to the minutes for the July 17, 2019 Town Council meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. And just a reminder, on item 15, please work with Councilmember Reed on reworking those plans some, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So with that, we will be moving on, excuse me just a minute, I just need to reorder a few pieces of paper. Okay, so we're going to move on to item 18. And that is introduced by title. Only two ordinances, an ordinance amending Chapter 17.110 and repealing Article 2, 3, Medical Marijuana Cultivation of Chapter 17.138, to adopt zoning standards and restrictions for commercial cannabis uses and cannabis cultivation for personal use, and an ordinance amending Chapter 5.56 to regulate commercial cannabis businesses within the town of Fairfax, sequo exempt, et cetera. So Ben, are you doing the staff report? And I want to point out, I think that we are at meeting 22 on cannabis for the town, and we realize it takes a lot of time to go through these items, and we appreciate everyone's passion, emotion, and caring, and testimony. So with that, Ben?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have had numerous public hearings since this discussion started back in November The draft cannabis regulations in similar versions to what you're looking at tonight have been discussed by the Town Council at both your May, June, and July meetings of this year. It's noted that there is a timeliness aspect to your deliberations, as the current moratorium, which has been in effect for close to two years, is set to expire on October 31 of this year. And that absent some separate action by the council, those, the state regulations would apply in terms of governing cannabis businesses. So to recap, what your council has previously agreed at those prior meetings, the first was that all commercial cannabis uses would be eliminated, with the exception of medical marijuana dispensaries, including delivery and/or adult-use delivery-only businesses. Regarding personal cultivation or cultivation in general, no commercial cultivation, six plants are allowed for personal cultivation, whether indoors or outdoors, there'd just be a total of six plants, and that would be outdoors per parcel, excluding multifamily. The medical exception is possible for up to 10 plants. We have also, in Chapter 5-56, one of the ordinances before you, created a business permitting process for those two commercial businesses described above. We also have been. We also have been working on varying setback buffers for the different business types, and that was an item of specific focus at your last meeting. And finally, the existing medical marijuana dispensary pertaining, regulations pertaining to those types of businesses have previously been addressed by your council. To recap, from the July 17th Town Council meeting, a majority of your council directed the creation of setbacks from a tutoring center of 300 feet for a medical cannabis storefront, and I'll be showing the buffer diagrams shortly. We would also be retaining a 250-foot buffer for cannabis delivery-only businesses from schools, and I'll get to the definition of school in a minute, and youth centers. The council also, with, as a result of their, your direction, resulted in definitions being changed for schools, tutoring centers, and it's noted that the daycare definition also includes preschools, and I can read the revised definitions if you'd like.
Let's wait, maybe we'll do that later. I think that's a good point, but let's go through it.
And then, finally, to prepare maps showing the various setback options. In terms of what your council has before you tonight, what we are proposing in this ordinance is for medical storefront retail setback distances of, it would be 600 feet from a school and a youth center, and 300 feet from a preschool slash daycare center, that's considered the same thing under our new definitions, and a tutoring center. For adult-use delivery-only retail, a 250-foot setback would exist from schools, youth centers, and tutoring centers. It's noted that no setback would be proposed from a preschool or daycare. And one of the questions that arose, it wasn't really discussed in detail at your last council meeting, would be, should preschools be included in the setback buffer for delivery-only businesses? In other words, at your last meeting, the existing Montessori school was considered a school. At this meeting, as you will see, the definition for a school has been revised, so that is now considered a preschool, and it does not have a setback proposed for that. And then getting into the diagram phase, you can see the five different businesses. And what you have basically are the five areas, starting with the St. Rita's School property, the youth center, which is comprised of the area just down the street here, the First Friends Montessori School, the Caterpillar Academy, and the Tutoring Center. Even though the regulations obviously deal in a more general way than listing the specific businesses. What you have here is a question, the question asked previously, which is, do we want to consider a 250-foot setback from preschools? And what you can see is, for the First Friends Montessori, this would be the buffers involving delivery-only business setbacks, that 250-foot buffer, and this with the setback buffer eliminated from that First Friends Montessori preschool. Oh, and it's also noted that the, what you have listed as attachments D and E are reversed, so the reference in your, in your staff report attachments, this is the actual, the accurate attachment, this is attachment E, that shows it with the buffer from First Friends Montessori, and this is attachment D, that does, that excludes that, given the current definition. And this is probably the most relevant setback buffer, because it talks about a combination business, or it would subsume the other setbacks within these setbacks. What you have here is, for medical cannabis storefronts, you have the large blue setback areas, and those are 600 feet from schools and youth centers, those are the two kind of blobs to the left, and then 300 feet from preschools slash daycares and tutoring centers. So those are the three other circles, and with half the radius.
And excuse me, Ben, just to clarify, this attachment F, this map is, depicts what staff has prepared for us, which, if we vote on it without any amendments, this is essentially the scenario for the setbacks, is that correct?
That's correct. This would essentially govern, except in the unusual instance where, if the town were to approve a delivery-only business, we would be looking at the reduced 250-foot buffer. But in all likelihood, we would be dealing with a combination business, and this is what would be applicable under the proposed regulations.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, because I know there are several maps floating around, and it gets a little confusing.
If I can ask another question, if you go back to attachment E, I believe it is, yeah, the one, that one, okay. There's a, in this case, this is referring to delivery-only businesses. The, why, why is it that, in this map, there's a setback around the First Friends Montessori, but not around the Caterpillar Academy?
The reason that we're proposing changes in the definition of schools and daycare centers is that what staff understood as the direction from the majority of the council was that preschools, which involve only accompanied children, and daycares, which are similar, we believe that the direction from your council was that it was not critical for a delivery-only business to include a buffer from those businesses. In other words, with the minimal street presence and other impacts from delivery-only businesses that, where you have youth facilities that only involve children that are accompanied by adults, it's not critical to have that setback buffer. So this includes it with. Yes, and Caterpillar Academy is classified as a daycare.
That's the answer to my question, then. Caterpillar Academy is classified as a daycare, whereas First Friends is classified as a preschool.
That's correct.
So that's the reason for that.
Yes.
I just, that was the question.
Let me back up one. This shows the difference in the buffer setbacks from what staff had presented at the July 17th meeting, and as you can see, at that time, First Friends Montessori was, fell under the definition of a school, and therefore, it involved the same 600-foot buffer as the St. Rita's site. So just going back and forth. And in addition, the Caterpillar Academy, at that time, that, that should actually be labeled preschool slash daycare, so that would have been subject to a 600-foot buffer also. So looking at the two changes in the definition, we have now revised that to, and the main difference is adding the 300-foot buffers for the Tutoring Center and the Caterpillar Academy daycare, and reducing the buffer for First Friends Montessori from the 300 feet in the currently proposed regulations, from, from the 600 feet that was in the prior regulations. And then finally, one of your council members requested that staff prepare a diagram showing what would happen if all of the youth-oriented sites were to have 300-foot buffers instead of the combination of 600-foot and 300-foot buffers. So this isn't included as part of the proposed regulations, but it does show all of those sites with 300-foot buffers for your comparison purposes. Other regulations, and it seemed as though the council was, majority of the council was in agreement with this, was that onsite parking regulations would be consistent with the town's current regulations for the types of businesses. It's noted that, that it's business type-specific, and so depending on whether you're delivery or retail, you would have different parking requirements. Design review would be required for greater than 50% remodel of any commercial building. The signage is consistent with the town's regulations for retail stores, but limited to six square feet in total area. A traffic study may or is likely to be required for any such business that generates, roughly speaking, more than 100 trips, additional trips per day. And that, in terms of review of the business permit applications, the initial application would be, applications possibly, would be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and your Town Council would conduct the final review and make an ultimate decision on which were the qualifying businesses. In terms of the business permit process, it's noted that the permits are assigned to a specific business, and that if the business were to close or is sold, they would have to go through another business permitting process, or it would simply expire. An application for a business permit would be initially reviewed by staff, and a submittal deadline, which has not yet been determined, depending on how many applications are submitted, would be applied. The Planning Commission would next conduct review and score, and accordingly, rank applications with a total of 100 points recommended under the scoring criteria for your review, and the recommendation would be passed on to your Town Council. In the course of your final review and ranking and, and decision-making, really, you would have 10 additional points that you could assign. The cannabis business permits would subsequently be processed by staff. One modest change proposed in the scoring criteria is, it was requested by one of your council members to slightly shift the weighting of the criteria. It's noted, these criteria are not included in the ordinance itself. This provides for additional flexibility, should we decide to adjust those. But the, the changes now would be to adjust it so that it's 35 points each for both business qualifications and the business plan, and the operating plan, whereas it was previously 40 points for the business qualifications and business plan, and only 30 points for the operating plan. There are three main ranking criteria, the business qualifications and business plan, the quality of the operating plan, and public benefits, with several sub-criteria referenced, and you have a copy of that as part of your package. And it's noted again, that there would be a total of 100 points assigned per business at the Planning Commission level, and 10 additional points possible at the Town Council. And we would request your council's direction on whether you believe the scoring criteria is ready to go as is, or if you would prefer to have the Planning Commission continue to deliberate and finalize those criteria. So staff's recommendation is to take public comment and introduce the ordinance for the first reading, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben. So we're just talking about questions for staff right now. None? Okay, then, I'd like to open it up. This is a public hearing, so I'll be opening the public hearing, but a couple things to remind people, because of the number of speakers on this topic, public comment will be limited to two minutes per person, individuals, and four minutes per group on this item. If you're representing a group, only one person gets that four minutes, but others in the group may speak as individuals. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. And with, there were a number of people wanting to speak on this item, so it'd be great if. Hi Shelby, come on up.
Shelby Lamott, 56 Manor Road. I want to thank you for going through that process of showing us the buffers and all the possibilities, and my.
Can I ask that folks that are speaking in the back of the room just step out? It just, it makes it hard to hear. We're on cannabis, which includes adult use. Thank you. Go ahead, Shelby.
So my discussion point last time was looking at, how do we make kind of the, a balanced decision about, about zoning and, and making sure that everyone is heard and everyone is, is kind of considered? And so clearly, that's happened, and I appreciate the work that's gone into that. I find it upsetting that Renee was disallowed to the, to the video portion of this, so I'm really disappointed in that. I think that her voice here would be really important. It was very important last time for her constituents and for all the work that she's done on this topic, so I'm just going to say, I think that was a, an oversight. So thank you for this, and I hope that you can see Claire to vote on it tonight. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. I want to assure everyone that this is going to be a fair and open session, and Renee's comments were very clear last time, and I think that's what the ordinance reflects. So come up to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Ryan Green. I was also here last time. I just want to second what the previous speaker said, that I do think it is a little unfair that someone who is on the city council and was voted in is being excluded without any precedent of her, of someone being excluded via video chat. I think the will of the people and the will of the council was heard at the last meeting, and that was the 600-foot buffer zones that are in it right now, as well as the 300-foot buffer zones around preschools and tutoring centers. And I really hope that the council will uphold its ruling from last time, even though there is a member absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krishna Menon. I'm 19. I'm here today to argue against decreasing the buffer zones. Decreasing the buffer zones would needlessly endanger children in Marin with no real tangential benefits. For starters, decreasing buffer zones could cause traffic to intensify in already hectic areas. One such area is intersection of Bank and Broadway in front of the Scoop Ice Cream Store. On Monday, between 2:30 and 3:00 p.m., that intersection saw 126 young children pass through the area, over half of those children unsupervised. In the first 10 minutes alone, 155 cars and 54 kids passed through the area. The increase in traffic congestion and the potential for drivers driving under the influence after consuming cannabis could lead to potentially devastating consequences for the youth of Fairfax. In addition, the state of California lacks any sort of digital test to check whether or not a driver is driving under the influence of cannabis. Without technology like breathalyzers, it's next to impossible to test whether a driver is under the influence, which means it's almost impossible to hold drivers culpable for the driving while under the influence of cannabis. Even blood tests, urine tests, and hair tests aren't able to prove that a driver was under the influence at the time of driving, since cannabis residue resides in the body for weeks after use. Please avoid putting the youth of Fairfax into a completely preventable harmful situation by decreasing buffer zones.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Zaleski, Director of Tutoring and Learning Center. I really want to express my gratitude to all of you for prioritizing the youth and families of Fairfax. Thank you for adding tutoring centers to the list of sensitive receptors needing buffer zones. You listened to the families of Fairfax and took into account their concerns for a safe corridor for our town's children. By analyzing the maps and changing buffer zones to fit our town, you are now in the process of creating consistent and common sense policy that will end up working even better for everyone. So I applaud you for coming to this compromise that works for families, children, residents, and legal cannabis customers. I believe these buffer zones are appropriate because legalizing cannabis sales in California does indeed involve treading into unknown territory. I think our lawmakers should make policy with caution, prioritizing the safety of families and children first and foremost. I like the staff ordinance as written, because it takes the majority of the Town Council's opinions into consideration. I hope you can support it tonight, because it presents a way to make this work for everyone. And most importantly, it presents a way to honor and protect the youth of our town going forward in this new era, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Yavas, and I'm an educator in Ross Valley. I've been teaching here for six years. I've been an educator for over 15 years, including preschools and elementary up to fifth grade. I just want to emphasize, I really appreciate seeing all of this and all the work that you guys have put in, and I just hope that we uphold these boundaries. I know how impressionable youths are at all different ages, and the more that we feel that we normalize, or the more exposure, the more likely we're going to have some more problems with the kids. And I just sort of was thinking about liquor stores, right? So like, the one in Fairfax, near Butterfield, is like, you know, it's kind of off the beaten path, but everyone can get to it, and it just sort of feels like it would maybe be sort of a similar concept, which would be great. It's fair, it's easy and accessible. There's also delivery options that are from like 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every day in Marin, for people who maybe can't walk up. So I think that leaving our integral towns as a safe zone for children, both for tutoring centers and elementary schools, daycares and whatnot, baseball field, you have 450 baseball players, you know, under the ages of 13 that are moving around all over. baseball players, you know, under the ages of 13 that are moving around all over central field and back and forth and all that. So there really is a lot of exposure all day long, every day, early evenings, late afternoons, mornings. It's constant, like the young man addressed earlier. And I just feel like it's just, the other piece that was mentioned earlier was the concern for impaired driving, you know? Impaired driving is up to two to four days, you know? And there really is no measure for that. Colorado admits that. There's no end-all to, you know, when am I not under the influence, you know? And that should be personal family decisions, not something inflicted upon our community. Again, I feel like the more that we emphasize that there's discretion used, and we as adults model that this is for this and that is for that, and we have maintained boundaries and show, you know, appreciation and integrity of our youth spaces, the more the children will see that while anything, I mean alcohol is legal, marijuana is legal and all of that, but we still need to use them in a, you know, in an appropriate way, at an appropriate age level. And these kids really are impressionable. There are schools that have uniforms and schools that have, you know, we don't want them to have any certain, you know, emblems on them because of exposure to other kids, right? So if we're worried about uniforms and what kids are wearing, we want to worry about what our town looks like, too. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Elliot Shannon House. I'm with Fairfax Cares. I represent the group, but I don't want to speak very long. I just want to say, I could also express my appreciation for the work that you guys did. It was tough. My involvement hasn't been the whole 22 months or whatever, but the time that I have spent here, I've seen some pretty tough discussion. And I just want to express my appreciation. It's a tough job, and I hope that we come up with the ordinance soon. It seems like we're back to almost a de facto ban, but not quite. So maybe if it doesn't change and we get this thing read and get it finalized, then some of us who are interested in this business will be able to work with whatever you guys come up with. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Deb Nelson, 37 Spruce Road. As you know, I've been attending a number of town council and planning commission meetings for most of the past year, and I've seen how challenging and divisive this issue has been. From all that I've learned from these meetings and from the research I've done, my personal view is that Fairfax should have just one medical dispensary delivery service. The way I see it, Fairfax, San Francisco allows one dispensary per 15,000 people. This would mean Fairfax would have half a dispensary, so one is plenty enough. 600-foot buffer zone should be the minimum, Contra Costa has 1,000. One dispensary means less weed in Fairfax, which means we have a healthier community, our youth are using less drugs, adults are using less drugs, our roads are safer, and there are less THC metabolites in the water, which means healthier aquatic creatures. Through all these meetings, what has been striking to me is the apparent lack of seriously prioritizing our community's health and well-being front and center. The desire for profit from the cannabis industry and from those who want easier access to weed, even though it's remarkably easy to come by, has been loud and helped sway. So here we are, many meetings, many hours later, and all I can plead for is a plan that holds the strongest buffers possible as our best shot at preventing what could become a complete disaster for our small town. To this end, Vice Mayor Goddard's recommendations appear to be the best compromise, and I emphatically ask that each of you vote in favor of her recommendation. As our vice mayor has been blocked from participating in this very important vote, please consider the requests from those of us who have spoken as proxy for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come on up.
Good evening. David Spampanato, Fairfax resident. First, I just want to say thank you. I know a lot of, we've been talking about this topic for a long time, a lot of effort has been put into it, and rightfully so. It's a hot topic for the community. I just want to make one point. State guidelines of buffers of 600 feet, 300 feet around schools, around youth centers, around preschools, it makes sense, and I'm asking that you all to respect that. I think the reason for it is for the health and safety and the well-being of children. I'm all for that, and I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Hello, I'm Gavin Spampanato, and I'm here to say the same thing. Basically, uh...
I think you got that pretty good. Thank you.
Smoking around the baseball field, well, I don't like it because when people smoke around kids, most of us just hold our breath, and we don't want to like hold our breath for a while, because it's not the best. And that's basically it.
Thank you very much. I know it takes courage to come up here, and you're one of our younger speakers, so thank you very much. Kelsey.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Fernandez, and I am here in support of Attachment F here at a very minimum. There's legitimate reasons why a cannabis storefront shouldn't be near where youth gather. You've heard the data on impaired drivers and increased fatalities, and to date, as Krishna said, there's no consistent way to test for driving high. You've heard the personal testimonies, one just right now, about loitering and secondhand smoke, even though public smoking is prohibited. Despite the fact that some cannabis storefronts take debit cards, there's still no federally legal banking system in place. So financial institutions can lose their FDIC status for taking cannabis money, so many businesses still prefer to be cash only. To put it bluntly, we're basically talking about a business that is dealing in cash and a Schedule I drug that has street value, which, fair or not, can be and has been an increased target for crime, even with the presence of guards and security cameras. This is not something that we want near our children and our youth-focused locations. Considering all the risks, public health experts support a cautious approach around where kids gather, particularly at this stage of the legalization process. I'm sure the day will come when the state and federal government catch up with legalized cannabis, and there are better regulations, enforcements, and testing of products, but we're not there yet. The least we can do during this transition period into a legal, safe, and fair market is to protect the health and safety of our most vulnerable residents by maintaining the state-recommended buffer zone of 600 feet between cannabis businesses and youth-centered locations. Fairfax can be a model of how to do this right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Holly Schaefer. I'm a Fairfax resident. I've spoken to the council before on this issue. I wanted to first just register my dismay that Vice Mayor Goddard is being prevented from voting tonight. It's, voting remotely via video is a courtesy that's been afforded to other council members in the past, and I think that that would have been the fairest way to do this, and I'm, I think it's wrong that she's been blocked. I also am in support of maintaining the 600, 300-foot buffer zones. That is a minimum state recommendation to protect kids. Why would we do any less than that? I have kids in this town. I spent my life savings on a home here because I did my research, and this was the most family-friendly place to live. My kids are in seventh grade and ninth grade. They hang out at M&amp;G's, they hang out at the Scoop, and, you know, I've been in other, I've been in other towns, I was just in Hollywood this weekend, where there's dispensaries, there's people outside smoking weed. Why do we need to have that where our kids convene? I ask you to protect our kids and just maintain the minimum state-recommended buffer zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tim Nardell, and this is my wife, Rozelle Boiko-Nardell. We're the owners of First Friends Montezori Preschool. So I want to address two issues, two kinds of issues. First is a policy issue, the second is a legal issue. On the policy side, this ordinance, when it was approved by the voters of the state of California, was approved as the adult use, adult use and youth protection ordinance. That was the bargain that the people of the state of California and the voters of Fairfax voted for, so that both adult use of cannabis would be protected and youth would be protected. And there were buffer zones and other items of youth protection embodied in that ordinance, in that legislation now. That is part of the bargain that is before you. Now, we've gone through multiple rounds of planning commission, a year or more of multiple hearings on this with the planning commission, and the planning commission decided to stick with the state-recommended rules. That was a well-considered process. You heard from hundreds of family members, many of our families at our school. And I would recommend on a policy level that the town think carefully about making a decision that abides with what the voters wanted when the voters approved this law. Now, on a legal level, I think there's a mistake in the maps and the consideration and in the singling out of First Friends Montezori as not being qualified as a school. I know my wife has made this point several times, that First Friends Montezori is actually a school as defined under California law and under this regulation. So I think in trying to mess with the, because we have a kindergarten program, and it's in trying to mess with these to appease special interests who want to have their businesses closer to...
Okay, so you need to wrap up. Did your wife want to finish? Because she can get two minutes, but you can't. So would you like her to finish?
I got two minutes, and so she can finish.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for giving me time, but yeah, I mean, we've been through this a lot of times, and as I have said and recommended by staff, that we do have a kindergarten program. Gavin Spampanato was my former student, and that is why I'm here again. The most vulnerable people, you know, in that alley are the kids that go to First Friends, and I'm very emotional because you change the buffer zone constantly, just to, just because you can do it, it doesn't make it right. So please, for the sake of Gavin, one stop, Spampanato, and the rest of the kids at First Friends, please, just do the buffer zone. 600 buffer zone is not that much, and that's what we voted on. I voted for this. So I'm done speaking, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it would be a mistake to have people making investment-backed decisions based on faulty maps, and you might get into trouble if you do that.
Thank you. Next speaker. Don.
Don Carney, 32 Mountain View Road. I'd appreciate the vote to come out as though Renee was sitting there. I think that's the democratic thing to do, and you guys know how to make that happen. I fully expect you will. One thing that's been pointed out to me in my practice, I run the Marin County Youth Court, I see kids all from all over the county around this issue. Kids now are having marijuana delivered anywhere they want with a fake ID. So given the fact that we're giving the green light to delivery, I hope the police department will engage in the same kinds of activities that they do with fake IDs and kids in liquor stores. It's going to make it a little more challenging, but I think several of us can get together and help the police department strategize how they can stop kids with fake IDs ordering right to their location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Granger, the co-chair of Smoke Free Marin. I know it's a little crossover here, however, we wanted to support the community with lessons learned from tobacco control. First of all, I actually have a granddaughter, not here, that goes to a Montezori school in Southern California, and her eyes are big and her memory is good. So I actually would support the previous speaker on including the Montezori school. But lessons learned, we know that when people in the state of California voted for Prop 64, they wanted to support adult marijuana use, but not a single one said, yay, let's have kids marijuana use. So with that thought in mind, I would take, lessons learned, we've been working on reducing the social norming, which, you know, signs and advertisement and proximity, access and availability make a big difference. So we would support 600 feet, we'd support 1,000 feet, but thank you very much for the kind of work you're doing to support the youth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Bridgette.
Hi, Bridgette Clark, and thank you for having this meeting, and I just wanted to mention a few things. I support the maximum buffer zones that you will allow. I stand for the kids. There's a huge substance use issue here, especially in the Ross Valley. As you know, we've shown you statistics, and we need your help, quite frankly. SAMSA, the Substance Use Mental Health Services Administration, talks about the three tiers of needs, and one of them is community level, and they mention that one of the risk factors includes laws and norms that are favorable to drug and alcohol use. And your ordinance says you will provide community access to cannabis while protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of Fairfax residents. Please maintain the buffer zones to help do this. Since legalization, you can smell cannabis, whether it be at the Fairfax Festival. Fake IDs are a huge issue. We need your help with that as well. Youth are following the lead of adults. Anxiety and stress is the reason why people are using so much of both alcohol and cannabis. While I understand that you want competition, I believe, with Marin Alliance, I also see you have a footprint issue in Fairfax, and Peter, you've mentioned this in the past, not only that, as well as a traffic issue. We want to be able to walk, bike, and continue to enjoy Fairfax without having issues that will come with more marijuana access. Thank you. I also was going to mention the county passed their ordinance, and they have not only included a 600 buffer zone, but they also, for schools and youth centers, they also went so far as to include parks and playgrounds.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point that out, and I would...
Thank you.
And one last thing is on the criteria for the businesses. One of the things I would like...
Bridgette, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. Youth addiction should be listed on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. I'm Bonnie Zaleski, Director of Tutoring, TLC Tutoring and Learning Center. I really want to thank the town council for your dedication to this town and your open-mindedness to listen to community members regarding cannabis policies, and especially adding buffer zones around sensitive receptors, such as schools, youth centers, daycare centers, and tutoring centers. These are the places where youth of our town congregate. Why do buffer zones matter? Having cannabis businesses near youth-centered locations may normalize the use of marijuana in the eyes of kids. Children and teens should be protected from marijuana and other drugs which lead to addiction. As you know, marijuana is a gateway drug. As Director of TLC Tutoring for the past 25 years, I have seen a lot. In addition to academic support for mainstream students, we've also helped students who are not in school because of drug addictions, suicidal episodes, and severe marijuana addiction and demotivation in school. The number of kids in this situation is shocking. They come to us to help motivate them and teach them the skills they have been missing in school and get them up to speed. Marin already has a higher use of marijuana and alcohol use among its teens, so again, I thank you for creating these much-needed buffer zones and for thinking first of the kids of this community.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lisa Graham, and I want to thank you for the work that you've done. I guess what I'd like to say is I'd love to think that we would be spending 22 meetings to discuss ways in which the town can work harder on creating better youth services, more activities for young people, community centers, with the growing population of young people that continues to... people that continues to move into these small little hamlets outside of San Francisco. But instead, the meeting is 22 meetings focused on cannabis. I've been here for 17 years. I am a strong advocate for young people. I used to work with Huckleberry Youth Programs. I've been very active since my kids were both here in the schools. All I, I don't want to add on to more of what's already been said, other than I would really strongly recommend the council go forward with Attachment F at the very least. In researching how the state of California is approaching this, just about every small community throughout California has much larger buffer zones that they're looking at, including relationship to libraries, buffer zones around being anywhere close to a residential zone. So this is, it's what should be happening, if not a larger buffer zone. So I really strongly encourage you to please go with Attachment F at the very least. I know in traveling this summer, I did not see, of course, Los Angeles, Hollywood Boulevard, all of that, I saw it. But I didn't see it in the small communities where people were playing baseball and having ice cream and being a family-oriented town. I really didn't see it there. So it would be great to keep, you know, the small-town vibe that has, I think, made this town so charming in all these small little towns. So I strongly encourage you to go with F. If Renee was here, and I wish she was and had a voice tonight, I wanted to applaud her for all of her efforts to work on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland. I don't have any major issues with Attachment F. And I'm speaking mainly because tonight there hasn't been any kind of countervoice. And what's been a little bit troubling, disturbing for me, as I've heard many of the citizens, and I know everybody is very sincere and genuine, and I care about kids, I come from a family of teachers, I've taught kids myself. But there's a tone that's been at these meetings that has bordering very closely to a demonization about cannabis. And there's almost a feeling of a little, almost a bit of a historicalness. And I just think it's a little bit distorted, and I would like to see that same level of commitment to alcohol issues. It feels somewhat, feels like there's some, a bit of hypocrisy. I don't see any, I don't see the parents in the little league getting in front of the liquor stores and saying, we can't have this around here. This is a gateway as well. And I know that in the culture of sports, alcohol is very common and present often in family contexts. So I just felt that it needed to be, to be said that, of course, it's a serious issue. Nobody wants kids getting hooked on stuff. And there's a lot of issues. People have done research. I respect all of that. But there has been a tone here that it's like, oh my God, oh my God. And I feel like, you know, the movie Reefer Madness from the '30s, it's borderlining a kind of fervor and historicalness. And, you know, because there's going to be some commerce doesn't mean that everyone's standing on the street, suddenly there's just marijuana everywhere, and everybody's high driving around town, and we suddenly have a menace. So I just wanted to, I'm speaking just to provide a counterbalance of a little bit of perspective. And of course, let's take care of the kids and have proper buffers. But, you know, marijuana is not going to be, end our town and our beautiful little charming Fairfax that's suddenly going to become, you know, a drug mecca. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Bell, Dominga Avenue, Fairfax. Newsflash, 40 years ago, 50 years ago, I believe, medical research proved that marijuana is not a gateway drug. Amazing. And here we are in 2019, hearing the same thing paraded about. Furthermore, if there's a glut of fake IDs, it's to get alcohol, it's not to get into medical marijuana dispensaries. You're not going to get in. Barbara, you know, you went, you saw what the, what it, what things are, the security is like there. Nobody else took the time to do it.
Yes.
So if the kids have a problem with marijuana that exists now, it's because they're getting black-market marijuana. Has nothing to do with medical marijuana dispensaries, zero, zilch. And as far as having a buffer zone around the tutoring center, are these kids going to be permanently psychologically scarred? How about the adults who, when they were young, were told, you're not good enough and you have to go to get a tutor? Think about the crushing effect it had on their ego. Maybe that's why they're drinking today.
Thank you, Mark. Mallory?
Mallory Goddard, Willow Avenue. I just want to echo what Richard said. And also, our charming little town of Fairfax started as a hippie, little, smoke-doping town. And that's what made it so charming. That was one of the main reasons, when people were just chill and loose and enjoying life. And then what happened is families come in with kids and want to change the vibe. And it was not a negative vibe at all. And, and I think also, at this point, medical marijuana should not be thrown out. I think it's really important for people who need it. And I'd rather see Lynette have a place where she's been doing this for years in a way that has not disrupted anybody. If parents need to take care of their kids, they should take care of their kids. But I don't think it's up to people to discourage people who are serving this town and serving people who need medical marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Valerie Hood, Fairfax. It just seems totally outrageous and out of line, and I so agree with Richard and Mallory. I really don't understand what's happening here. It's like we have gone from, you know, celebrating, was it David Weinsoff started calling us Mayberry on acid? And now we're like, oh my God, we're going to die for, you know. All I want to say is that when my father was visiting me, and he had stage IV cancer, he didn't last very much longer, we made many trips to the medical marijuana dispensary. It was the one way he would eat. And guess what? I never, in all that time, and it was the only time I ever went there because I had no reason to otherwise, we never saw any kids around, not anywhere near it. No one was trying to grab a joint. I mean, this is just foolishness. And I don't even know how many, mostly people that are here I don't even recognize. I don't even think they're from Fairfax. What are they trying to protect? What are they, I mean, to me, the main thing should be people need to start taking care of their kids. And they're not. They don't. They drink with their kids, they smoke with their kids, they do everything. They leave their drugs around, kids take them. They leave money around and the kids take that. How the hell do you think they get the money to buy the stuff? Just give me a break.
Thank you, Valerie.
Hello, Rick Hamer, Fairfax. I know you know this already, but you have to have the courage to move on this. You know the moratorium is coming up. You know that this is the meeting that you have to do this, and you have to have the courage to move forward. It might result in future litigation, and that's just part of what the courage is about. So please have the courage to make this happen today. It's not going to be popular with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I know this has been so many meetings, so I appreciate you guys really digging deep into this. So first of all, thank you so much for putting the amount of time that you put into this. I think it's really important. I would just like to say that it is, youth are getting things confiscated from school, and we get to look at those different products. And we are seeing that a lot of those are coming from approved dispensaries or approved from the state of California for their sales. So that is something to take into consideration, as well as the increase of kids getting access from edibles that are being left around by adults. There's been a huge influx in that. But today, we're here to talk about buffer zones. So I think that maintaining the state-recommended buffer zone sends a message to the residents in Fairfax. It shows residents that we prioritize the health and wellness of youth over the cannabis industry. The town is under no obligation to bend over backwards and try to find creative ways to offer space for an outlet for big cannabis products. We're not talking about small, local, homegrown businesses we don't allow. We don't allow cultivation here. It's not being grown here, it's being brought into our community. So we need to think really, really carefully about these outlets that we're creating for those big cannabis products. Fairfax is a small town, and it's currently the only jurisdiction in Marin that's allowing storefronts at this point. So I think that really take into consideration everything that's been brought up here. We know that in Marin County, we have higher than normal rates of cannabis use. I know that we've brought this up plenty of times, but I think it's important to really think about it. In California, in the past 30-day use for cannabis products, for ninth-grade students, it's 13%. For Marin County, it's at 18%. And for TAM Unified High School District, it's 22% of ninth graders. For 11th grade-
Thank you.
11th grade, it's 40% of 11th graders who have used in the last 30 days. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? So seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. I think one of the things I'd like to do before I open it up for deliberations from the council is to make a brief statement. And there've been issues brought up today about Vice Mayor Goddard not participating, and I've also received some emails about this. And I want to just clarify things. Renee told me about two months ago that she was going on vacation, and she would not be participating in the August meeting. During that time, she didn't request to teleconference or participate remotely. She just wanted to inform me that she'd be gone. Apparently, she requested this recently and not of me directly. I said no primarily for the following reasons. For those of you who read the Marin Independent Journal, there's been a lot of controversy over Marin Municipal Water District's certain directors participating remotely. And there's been issues raised as far as open government, transparency, and commitment. We have a lot of controversy over a lot of things in Fairfax, more so than probably other jurisdictions. That's because we have so many people engaged, which I really appreciate. I didn't think that we needed to bring in more controversy at this time. And so Renee has gone to Russia on vacation and left for nearly a month on Monday. If she felt strongly enough about participating at the time she planned her vacation, she could have adjusted it by a few days. I took a vacation in May, and although it was not convenient for me to do so, I went after the council meeting because I wanted to be here. And so when we plan vacations, we can plan around this. We typically only have one meeting a month. So that's one of the reasons. If she had raised the matter at the time she told me she couldn't participate, we could have agendized the idea of teleconferencing or participating remotely in one of our council meetings and had pros and cons, had public comment on the matter. So initially, I understand, although I didn't hear this directly from her, that she wanted to only teleconference in for the cannabis item, which seemed a bit targeted to me. And some of you raised the issue that John Reed called in once for a meeting, and at that time, neither Renee or I were on the council, but we were present. We were being considered for appointments. And during that time, John's mother was very ill, and I believe she even passed away during the time that he was away. It was very sad. It was clearly not a planned vacation. It was not something where John took off because it was convenient for him to do so. And it was a very sad time. So I'm also concerned that Renee chose to discuss council members, council matters, outside of talking to other council members or with staff. And I've known about this for a couple of weeks, and I had concerns, but I didn't raise it with people. I felt that, other than talking to town staff, I really don't think that having a council member call in from Russia while on vacation is in the best interest of Fairfaxans. But I do want to assure everybody, Renee made her comments very clear last time, and I think the majority of the council at that time heard those. And I'm for what's good for the town of Fairfax. And I have very strong opinions on this matter, but I'm also a team player. So I want to assure everybody that this is a fair and open hearing, and you guys have been heard. Renee was heard last time. But it's time to move on, and it's time for us to really get something on the books because if we don't, we're out of time. And it's really important that all these struggles, and we have fine-tuned this and split hairs and worked through these items, it's not going to be perfect. It's not going to satisfy everybody. It's not going to be what I wanted. But I think we're going to have something that will be on the books that will serve to the best of our ability to serve the interests of people that we've heard and heard from. So with that, I'd like to open it up to council deliberations.
Sure.
And Peter, did you want to go first?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff, for doing this exercise with the maps and the zones. I think it's very good to see visually the impact of what we're deciding. And I think it's, it was very informative for me and to be able to see the different alternatives. I'm also really glad that we have reached the end of the road, and really, we're coming down to a discussion about the size of buffer zones. So that's all very good. I'm an optimist. I'm a glass-half-full kind of guy, so we are on track. I do want to, and I did agree to read a statement from Renee, both addressing what Barbara discussed and also her views on the ordinance. So let me read this. These are Renee's words. "At this point, I am streaming the meeting, and it is 7:00 a.m. on Thursday where I am. I feel the public is owed an explanation for my absence. For the record, first of all, our family trip to Siberia, Russia to visit our relatives was planned in the very early part of 2019. Secondly, I have served on the council for six years, and I've only missed one meeting, which was a special meeting scheduled for the last minute on New Year's Eve. My request to participate remotely in tonight's meeting was denied based entirely on Mayor Kohler's judgment call. It was confirmed by the town attorney. There are no legal grounds to preclude council members from participating in meetings remotely so long as the posting requirements are fulfilled. The town code does not have a set policy which allows or disallows remote participation. There was only one other time in my six years of service that a council member participated remotely. It did not set a precedent, nor do I believe it would do so at this time. I'm grateful to serve with such diligent colleagues. I disagree with the mayor's decision, but for the sake of peacekeeping and not adding to further delay, instead, offer this brief statement." And so these are her views on the ordinance. "I want to thank staff for providing maps to clearly depict the different possible buffer zones and cannabis business location opportunities, and for bringing back a clear and very well-considered ordinance. Also, a huge debt of gratitude to the public for showing up month after month, and for your emails and the information you provide throughout the long process." Again, this is Renee's view. "I urge the council to support the ordinance before you with buffer zones of 600 feet from schools and youth centers, and 300 feet from tutoring centers and daycare preschools." This is a direction given to staff by the majority of council at the July 17 meeting. "As I stated in the last meeting, there are two particularly challenging intersections in town. They both also happen to be where the vast majority of youth congregate. One is Pastore, and the other is Klaus. White Hill Middle School bus stop, Morrow's Pizza, and TLC are near the Pastore intersection. And the Scoop, Gear &amp; Gellies, the Variety Store, Live Water, et cetera, are all at the Klaus intersection. The traffic and parking at both locations must also be strongly considered in any decision. Maintaining 600 feet from schools and youth centers, and 300 feet from daycare preschools and tutoring centers for medicinal storefronts will ensure that these most sensitive youth areas are buffered. It will also open up-" It will also open up more appropriate locations for commercial cannabis businesses downtown. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work and for understanding the reasons for my absence." So those are Renee's views. And so I'd like to express my own. And I promised her that I would read the statement so that her views would be considered by my colleagues.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So this is, as I've said before, we are a small town, so it's a lot harder working with these kinds of constraints. In a way, we don't have, it's sort of a luxury for the county to be able to impose much larger buffer zones, or cities like Novato. And in Fairfax, we have things much more on top of each other. And that's why I really do appreciate seeing the maps. I don't know if we can have those up still. I think they are useful for our discussion.
Is there a particular one?
Yeah. So my, and I appreciate everyone's comments on the buffers and the overwhelming expression to include the larger buffers, the 600 feet rather than 300 feet for the schools. As I've said before, I don't think the buffers are quite as critical, and I respectfully disagree that the mere presence of these businesses would have the detrimental effects that the community is concerned about that we're hearing. But I also listen to the community. And although I disagree with that viewpoint, my personal preference would be, and again, based also on the maps, having the 300-foot uniform buffer zones around schools, daycares, youth centers, and tutoring centers. The net effect, if you look at, well, it's not up now, but I believe it's Attachment G, it really isn't that big of a difference. It's not that critical. Essentially, the 300-foot zones would open up the block where the coffee roasters is, and where the bike museum is, some of those businesses, and the lumberyard, which I don't think is in any danger of going out of business and becoming a dispensary or other use like that. So it is really helpful to see these differences. In my view, it's not that critical of a difference. And I would prefer the 300-foot buffers. But if my colleagues are in support of 600-foot for schools and youth centers, and 300-foot for the youth center and daycares, I would also support that. Again, that's based on a couple of things. One is the community's expression in support of that. And also, we do need to get this passed very, very quickly. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Just one question. Maybe we should wait on this. I think there was the question about the delivery buffer. Should it include certain things? We can wait on that. Those are details. We'll wait. Okay. So thank you, Peter. Bruce, did you want to go?
Well, I, yeah, I think we do just need to resolve the question that staff had about the buffers for delivery. But as far as the buffers for a retail storefront, which at this point is medicinal-only, I support Attachment F, essentially, as we came to last meeting. I think it's a compromise that we've come to over a lot of discussion.
I don't think that's Attachment F. Attachment F, I think it's-
It was on the PowerPoint.
That's not Attachment F.
That is Attachment F.
Right. That's what I'm talking about. The one that, with regard to medicinal storefronts.
Okay, so you're doing it stepwise.
600 feet around schools and youth centers, 300 feet around school, much younger kids' schools and tutoring centers. So I support that approach.
So as the ordinance is written?
As the ordinance is written. Yes.
Okay.
And I'm just, I thank the public for, I always feel good in Fairfax when, as we come to the end of a very long discussion, it feels like we're coming to a consensus. We've all kind of found our way to a compromise that we can all live with. So I appreciate everybody's work.
Just to clarify, we don't always come to consensus, but I think we try to work collegially, even if we don't.
What I said is I appreciate it.
Okay. So John, would you like to go?
Sure. I also appreciate compromise. And basically, this buffer map that is currently on the screen right now doesn't make everybody happy in the community, but it makes, I'm guessing, who knows, 80%? 85% of people? It's really hard to say without a ballot measure. And even then, is everybody going to vote? But there's been a lot of healthy discussion here, and I think it's brought to light a lot of things that we need to do in the future, especially regarding, I mean, I think it's an excellent thing, working collaboratively, you know, with the police to figure out a good methodology to do effective sting operations so that, you know, we don't get kids getting deliveries. I mean, I think that's huge. I imagine that this is not the last time we're going to talk about this. You know, it's going to come up, and we're going to need to fine-tune this as the years go by. But I think right now, what we've got is a balance. It's a compromise between a lot of different people in our community. And I think it's not, you know, big marijuana versus that. I mean, we have chain store origins that are written specifically around things like that, too. It's called a formula business ordinance, technically. But I think that the, you know, where we have arrived at this point, I think, I hope that we can come to pass that tonight, because that's the result of a long collaborative back-and-forth process that we've had over a number of meetings. You know, I'm willing to, you know, if it looks like we can't do that, I'm willing to continue with it and try to make it work. But I think we can do it.
But I think what I'm hearing you say, maybe I missed it, is you support the ordinance as written.
Well, that's the quickest way of saying it, yeah.
Okay. Well, just, let's just try to-
Heaven forbid we say things as quickly as possible.
It would be nice for us to be very clear.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it is, yeah, it's, I do, in fact, support it the way it is written.
Okay, great.
And I think it's the result of a long, torturous process that frankly, I think reflects on our community and the thoughtfulness that it puts into things. And that's really what makes Fairfax a valuable place to contribute to.
Thank you, John. So I have a question for staff. I have a question on the definition of tutoring center. I had raised this beforehand. And that is on page nine of the red line, where it says, "offers such instruction to at least three clients who do not reside on the premises for at least 37 weeks a year." In my mind, three students is a pretty small amount. I think our current tutoring center has quite a few students. And I think I could probably open a tutoring center with three students. And I don't think we'd want me to do that, but I do have the degrees to be able to do so. So I would suggest we look at something like 10, because as we know, 10 students, I think that works for our current tutoring center. But as we know, because this definition includes any tutoring center, we want it to be clear that we're looking for folks similar to the tutoring center that's been here for 25 or more years, that are really committed to this community and really providing a service. So I would suggest to my fellow council members that we change it from three students to 10 students, and I don't think that's going to be a problem for our current tutoring center, who have a number of students. So that would be the one change I would have. Yes, council?
Thank you. I just need a clarification. 10 students overall or 10 students per week?
What it says right now is that, "and offers such instructions to at least three clients who do not reside on the premises for at least 37 weeks a year." I would change the three to 10.
Okay.
So it's basically the same sentence, but it's-
And for interpretation, your intent is 10 clients overall, but not necessarily all 10 clients every single week? Just for interpretation. Okay.
That would be my preference, yes.
I think that means we have a more committed business. So the question, I've made myself clear that I'm not supportive of those changes to the buffer and the proposal from last month. And I was prepared, if we were going to reach some sort of two-two thing, to go the way of the majority from last time to make sure that we move forward. And I don't think I need to rehash the things I've said just to point out that I don't use cannabis. I don't drink alcohol. I don't even drink coffee. So I have no personal interest in these products, but my interest has been, and it has not been for profit, it's really trying to do what the voters, 77.6%, at least a large majority of them were asking for. And so I think we've reached kind of a compromise that, like I said before, it's not going to be perfect. It's not going to do everything that everyone wants. It's not necessarily what I would have liked if I were in charge. But I think we've reached a compromise after these many months of deliberating. And with that, I think we should get the details ironed out with the delivery item, Ben, that you wanted clarification on, on the buffer for the delivery item.
Yes, it was to clarify in regards to the definitions of school and preschool, and I will ask for council's assistance on this. But basically, what we have done with our definitions, and this comes into the definition, and this is in 17-110-020, the definitions of daycare centers specifically in school. And what we've done there is carve out that, or specify that in order to be considered a school, you would have to offer a range of instruction from transitional kindergarten or kindergarten through 12 for four grades. So at least four grades.
Okay, that's not what I was asking. You were asking for clarification on the buffer for the 250-foot.
Yeah, I think your question was, the 250 buffer from delivery is from schools and youth centers. You asked us to keep it the same as was originally proposed, but that was before we split the definition between school and preschools. So the question is, do you want to keep it 250 from schools and youth centers? Or do you want to also add in 250 from preschools and daycares? That's the core question.
So thank you, and sorry for interrupting you, Ben, but I didn't want to go off, a little off course. So I would just say, can we poll the council members for their opinion on this matter? And Bruce, do you want to start?
Well, I guess I'd come back to the question that I was asking earlier. So you just said, you asked, "Do we want to only have the 250-foot buffer around schools and youth centers?" That would be the other map.
It just went down.
That would be that one, right? Or do we want to have the 250-foot buffers around those uses? Plus also, and I think you just said, Garrett, preschools and daycares.
That's not this map.
No, that's just a preschool.
That's just preschools.
Daycare would be Caterpillar Academy, so you'd have another 250 radius there.
Maybe there are really three possibilities, right? The first map, the second map, or add yet another circle on that map. Okay, just to clarify that. Okay. So as to my answer to that question, I don't think that the daycare, which is the Caterpillar Academy, that's an example of a daycare. I don't, I think this map would be sufficient. We don't need to include a buffer around a daycare. I kind of lean toward this map, essentially. In other words, adding the buffer around the preschool, because I'm hearing the concern of that particular preschool. But I'm not, I don't feel strongly about it for the reasons I said at the last meeting, that I think that it's less, it's a less sensitive issue for kids who are completely supervised and don't walk around on their own, don't go to school on their own or go home on their own. Okay, so that's kind of, one second, council. So right now, but you could go either way. Janet, you were about to say something. Is there a clarification you want to put in here? Yeah, let's hear that. Can I sort of ask her, as mayor? Okay, council, what did you want to add?
I want to point out that the definition of daycare center includes preschools. So when we're talking about daycare and preschools, it's the same thing. So let's not try to split daycare and preschool.
Okay, that's a good point. Well, maybe, why don't we start with Peter? Because I think Peter had some good points at the last meeting about preschool, daycare. And so on the 250-foot delivery, the question is, do you want to stay with the schools and youth centers as the buffer?
Yeah, I do. And specifically, that's Section 17-dash-dot-110-040-C2. And that's a 250-foot radius from a school or youth center. Again, I don't think the concerns, especially are there for a delivery service, especially because it would have, you know, wouldn't have any display advertising and so forth. The building where my law practices has a delivery service, and you wouldn't even know it's there. I mean, there's just no signage. There's no... So I think the impact is no different than if there was any other kind of delivery service.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start on that. And John, you want to weigh in? And so we're just talking about, would you like to leave the buffer for 250-foot from schools and youth centers? Or did you want to add the preschools? Also, kind of listening to what's been said already.
Yeah, I think for a number of reasons. I think it's actually this map right here that says Attachment D. It says Attachment E on our stuff here is probably the better one. Because I think you do start to get into gray areas around the definitions of other things. And basically, we're talking about a place where cars are parked and something is happening inside of a building. It's not obtrusive. And I mean, yes, you don't want that right next to a school, but...
Okay.
But I would agree with this.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Bruce, did you want to try again? Or did you want to weigh in again?
I'm fine with Attachment D, as it's on the screen right there.
Okay, great. And I agree with that as well. So what, and so what we're looking at is 200, what's on the screen? And frankly, I'm a little confused as to what's in my packet. So what's on the screen is 250-foot delivery, only setbacks from schools and youth centers. Is that how the ordinance is written?
That's how it's written.
Thank you. Okay. I think we have exhausted this topic.
Pretty much.
And I think I would ask for a motion. But I think one question is, we made a change to the definition of tutoring centers, which Bruce agreed with. And I just want to make sure the fellow council members feel the same way, or...
Sure. People can just support that.
Okay. And-
Is that the only change?
Yeah, that was the only, that was just a technical thing I had.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, John, are you okay with that? Okay, good. All right. So Peter, would you like to make the motion? I think this is supporting- I think this is supporting our wishes from our vice mayor from far away.
Okay, so I would like to introduce and read by title only, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax Amending and Restating Fairfax Municipal Code Title Seventeen Zoning," Chapter seventeen-point-one-zero, "Medical Marijuana Dispensaries," and repealing Article Three, "Medical Marijuana Cultivation of Chapter Seventeen-point-one-three-eight to Adopt Zoning Standards and Restrictions for Commercial Cannabis Uses and Cannabis Cultivation for Personal Use." And I'll read the, introduce the next ordinance in a separate motion.
You also want to mention the change?
Yes, and with the one change to...
Definition of tutoring center?
The definition of a tutoring center, hold on one second.
I think you can just say with the change to the definition of the tutoring center, you don't have to read...
To change three to ten.
Changing the number of clients from three to ten.
Okay, thank you. And...
And that's my motion.
Okay, would someone like to second that?
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. So that motion carries three to one. Thank you. And did you need to make the next motion, Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to introduce and read by title only, "An Ordinance Entitled, Quote, 'An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax Amending Fairfax Municipal Code Division Two, Chapter Five-point-five-six, Entitled, Cannabis Businesses, to Regulate Commercial Cannabis Businesses Within the Town of Fairfax.'"
Okay, and would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that matter carries four. Okay, did you get, who did the motion and the second? Okay, and the one matter we didn't talk about was the scoring criteria. I would say, just, I'm just going to give my input first, which is unusual, but I'd like to say, I think it's, it's ready to go. We always have the option of revisiting this in the future, and I think that's a great way to go. But I will defer to my other council members. What are your feelings on the scoring criteria?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's difficult to work it out until we've tried it, so I think the next thing we should do is see how it works.
Okay, great. Peter?
Yeah, I totally don't understand it, so, no. I mean, it's, it's a difficult thing to come up with these criteria. It seems like it's a workable attempt, and will, I'm sure it will be probably subject to some other change in the future, but I'm okay with it, for a starter.
And do you need a motion for that? Why don't, Peter, why don't you go ahead and make a motion on that, since you've been so good at the last ones?
Is this, has this formally before us as part of the...
Yeah, you can, I mean, you really don't need to make a motion, but you could just make a motion.
Why did you nod your head when I asked if we should make a motion?
Well, we could go either way, but if you'd like to make a motion, I would just assess, I would just suggest you adopt the scoring criteria as proposed.
Sure, I would make a motion then to adopt the scoring criteria set forth in this evening's staff report for, scoring criteria for cannabis business applicants.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Okay, so that was council member lax, second read. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and sitting through many meetings. And I'm going to just request that we take an eight-minute break, and then we will take up Item Eleven, which is the small cell ordinance. So thank you, everyone. It's nine fifteen. You just jinxed it. Hi. Oh.
Oh, hi, Matt.
So let's go ahead and reconvene, and we'll be discussing Item Eleven. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to consolidate Titles Nineteen and Twenty, and of the Fairfax Town Code into a revised Title Nineteen, which establishes uniform and comprehensive regulations for wireless telecommunications facilities within the town on private property and within the town's public right-of-way, sequo exempt, et cetera. So for the staff that are conversing, let's wrap it up. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'd like to have the staff report, please. Garrett, is that you?
That'd be me.
Okay, great.
Okay, so as you indicated, this is your second reading. So at your July seventeenth meeting, you actually introduced this ordinance. This is your second reading, and if you adopt it, then it would take effect thirty days from the effective date and replace the interim ordinance that you adopted back in September, I mean, twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. So it's a quick summary, at your last meeting, you did have a fairly lengthy discussion, and you asked us to actually do three, in essence, three revisions to, to the ordinance, and they were, one, you asked us to add language indicating that the annual recertification process for a small cell facility must be completed before any applications for that facility would be considered. That was one revision. You did ask in one section that we clarified, it includes compliance with ADA language, and that's in there. And in another section, we actually added the requirement for public noticing for eligible facility requests. Those were the three changes. We did a red line to go along with the clean version, and so if you were to adopt this, then this would be a second reading, again, it would take effect, and I think we indicated the version of the ordinance that we put on the dais just changed the numbering that the FCC changed, is a clerical change, which again was, they listed everything as one, their sections were one-point-six, no, one-point-four-zero-zero-one, and they changed the numbering to one-point-six-zero-zero-one, I believe, no, one-point-six-one-zero-zero, or whatever. Now I'm getting myself all mixed up, that's it. One-point-six-one-zero-zero. So we changed that about thirteen spots in the ordinance, but that concludes the staff report.
And I think you wanted to point out that typically at a second reading, you don't make further changes, and if you do, then we go back to the first reading, so we kind of start this all over again, correct?
Right, your second reading tonight would become your, thanks for pointing out, your second reading tonight would become your first reading, and then we'd have the second reading at the next meeting, if you make changes.
And I think our, our hope is, because there's been so much changes and people trying to work very closely with members of the public who've reached out to us, our hope is that, again, just like cannabis, it's maybe not perfect in everybody's mind, but it's, it's really represents what we could do, and I think we've gone further than a lot of jurisdictions. So with that, I would ask my fellow council members, do you have questions of staff? No deliberations at this point. All right, seeing none? So this is just, I'm going to open this up to public comment, and a couple of things I want to say, because we do have other items on the agenda, and we do have some folks who want to speak on this, quite a few, not as much as cannabis, but we're going to, I'm going to keep people to two minutes per individual, and then if you're representing a group, you get four minutes, but only one person in that group can speak for the four minutes. So with that, Richard, did you want to come up to the podium? Thank you.
Here from FiveG Free Marin, I'll take the four minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I may not, I may not need the four minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I have a couple of comments, and they're not mutually exclusive, though they're going to sort of seem maybe that way. So I believe that the ordinance that we have now, what you have in front of you, is extremely improved from where we left off in last September, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to discourage you from getting that into effect or continuing the process tonight, because I think it at least helps us. What I would say is that, you know that the Fairfax chapter, FiveG Free Marin, and with all our other colleagues around Marin, we've studied this really closely, we've been in a lot of minutia, very similar to your staff. Some of our key people are away right now, and as a group, we haven't really had a chance, we don't get to see anything as it's iterating and red lines until things come out right before the, this type of a meeting, so...
We don't either.
We would, well, we would like to, but we would like to have some time with where we've landed now, because there were those final changes from, that the town manager just gave in the staff report. And so what I'm going, I'm just telling you honestly, what I'm going to basically recommend to my friends and colleagues around this, is that if there's something that's really, really troubling for us down the line, that we're going to come back to and ask for some kind of, you know, amendment or whatever, we'll, we'll raise it with you all in an appropriate manner down the line. So I'm going to support you guys going forwards with it, but what I also wanted to say along with this, and one of the first things I said last September, and I've brought it up at different points, is that I'm not scared to defy the FCC quite the way some other folks are. I've been asserting this, and I want to repeat it again, just to get it on the record tonight, that I actually believe, because we're such a small town, with so little upside in terms of customers that are available for the telecoms, and that we're a town with a longstanding reputation of being extremely active, and we, and we have folks that are extremely well-informed, and so were they to really make us the battleground city, I just don't think they're going to do it. They know that we'll have people out there protesting every day in the middle of town, and when the national TV coverage comes and they start asking questions, and suddenly we have an extremely literate and knowledgeable group of citizens that can speak to it. So while I would like to see you move ahead with this ordinance, because I think it's much, much stronger, and it's one of the stronger ones around the country and in Marin, I would still like us to consider a moratorium or some really strong action. I'm not scared of the FCC, I don't think they want to pick a fight with us here, and I just wanted to get that on the record, that that's, that's still where I'm coming from, it's where I've been coming from all along, and, you know, they've way overreached, it's an outrageous thing, this whole business is about the science, science isn't there and whatever. We all know what's afoot. We know what, who's in the White House, and we know how, who's getting appointed, and lobbyists and whatever, and this is, this is all about serving the telecoms, and I think Fairfax can, we can do our ordinance, but we can still be brave and do something more defiant.
Thank you, Richard. Just needed to press the button. Thank you.
Yeah, it was on. Janet Fitzgerald, Fairfax. So I have to agree with Richard on several points. I want to get right to a specific for the sake of time, is that we notify the schools, and that means students, teachers, and parents, of the number of feet that these five cells will be within reach of all of the, of all of the campuses, and to supply them with all of the reports that we have provided you, or others that you have, the science, because as you know, there is no study saying it's safe. So the schools need to be notified of that, and also that they need to know that the reach for 5G is two to three thousand feet, okay? So that's just to be fair to them. Also, because I think it is clear, we all know that we're doing this under duress, this meaning an ordinance or any agreement, we're not really in agreement, we're being told we have no choice. It's not democracy, we all know that. It's not constitutional, we know that too. So I would like to suggest that we actually call a spade a spade, and there's no law saying that we can't put this note in with the ordinance, that we are doing this under duress, under the threat of a lawsuit, that we fear worse than death. That's why we're doing this, okay? We know it's unconstitutional, we know it's undemocratic, we know it's unwise, and we know that 5G is inhumane, it's an involuntary human experiment. And we need to call a spade a spade and say that, okay? In term, speaking of constitutionality, many, many months ago, when this started, I made a suggestion that we locate a constitutional law expert and an administrative law expert. That means looking at powers of administrative agencies such as the FCC, because administrative agencies don't make laws. Congress makes laws. The job of the FCC is supposed to regulate industry to protect us, and the opposite has happened. We are now being forced to accept something that we know is dangerous, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, so I hope you take the suggestions and address them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Frank Agar speaking for Save Fairfax. The public was not able to see the final ordinance until August the third. It's forty-eight pages, and to read, compare, and understand. As city councils and boards of supervisors rush to approve 5G ordinances, even Sebastopol has adopted a 5G ordinance. I urge caution here, you don't have to march to the FCC drummer for 5G. You are deciding winners and losers tonight by listing preferred locations. The number one preferred location is commercial highway, and Fairfax, a number of residential living units and apartments will be impacted, apartments along Sir Francis Drake. The second preferred site is, is the central commercial zone, and there we have second-story residential units. Then the third is, is living units, it's limited commercial, where there are living units and limited commercial at Deer Park, the old central school site, and Tennelema. All commercial zones in Fairfax border residential, they're very close, there's not a lot of space in between, and Fairfax requires only a fifty-foot setback for housing units. Appeals based on health or environmental concerns in violation of FCC regs will not be accepted. So that's going to, you're going to limit the appeals that someone might have. Then on the appeals, on nineteen-point-oh-four-point-two-four-oh, an applicant must file an appeal within two days of, within two days after denial. So how does the public find out about, about antenna approvals? The ordinance is silent on appeal time for an opponent. Two days will be the de facto appeal time. The appeal time is, is the number of days in Saturday, Sunday, and holidays are counted. If a person is gone for the weekend, they may miss out on appealing. The appeal fee for a regular person appealing an antenna within fifty feet of their house, home, is five hundred dollars. That's an expensive fee that a person's going to have to file. And then the last question I have of you, and, and, you know, and I know what it's like sitting in, in that location, is who of you will accept the responsibility for the first 5G or smart meter antenna installed in Fairfax? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Sort of hard to follow on their footsteps. Valerie Hood, and I'm here for Fairfax tomorrow. 5G cell towers are coming, and they aren't safe. We're basically with this ordinance, even though it is, I have to agree with Richard. We're basically with this ordinance, even though it is, I have to agree with Richard, the best we've got so far, it's not good. It's not good at all, because we're creating sacrifice zones. As Frank said, so I have to agree with both of them, what you're doing is you're inviting the telecoms in, flat out, you are. That means that residents and children especially, who work downtown, all this fuss made about medical marijuana, and where are the parents tonight? It's okay if my kid walks down, gets microwaved by a 5G antenna, I'm like, part of me is like, I feel like I'm dislocated in my brain over all this tonight. These people working down at the Good Earth, they are scared to death. They are all, they've all been educated, because I've been down there educating them, and they're furious about what's going on. And guess what? Most of them are renters. And how much money do they have to fight this? Or time? A lot of those people are living in their cars, for God's sake. They're going to sit under a 5G microwave all night? I just really want us to think carefully about what we are saying okay to, because it's not okay. And what Frank just said, who's going to be the one that says, "You get to fry," because that's what we're creating. We're talking about making a damn microwave oven on our planet. I just don't think anybody's really thinking very carefully about what this is and what it means. The people that live in those apartments, like Lou Tremaine, he lives between Sir Francis, on Sir Francis Drake, near the Good Earth, he's going to get microwaved on both sides of his house if you let this go through, just as a, for instance, of someone you actually know. I mean, you want to accept that responsibility? We have before, and I've been part of it personally, stood down, sprint, singular, they walked out of the room when we said no. All it takes is one person, and they always wish somebody had done it during the time of Hitler. This is really no different. Some community needs to say no. You have our backing. If we have to stop the trucks, you know we'll do it, because we've done it before. And then you're, what are you going to do, put us in jail? Because that's what it's going to come down to, it really will. We will follow Josh Hart and everybody else who helped us organize that. We won't stand for this. I just want to be really clear, you are going to have a rebellion here, and I mean big-time rebellion. This is not, this is not a goofy thing about whether or not medical marijuana is going to be down the street in something that no kids are ever going to have access to. This is about real life and death. They give us five years from implementation. They're already seeing symptoms where this is rolling out. This is no joke. I don't know, when I come in here, I just want to walk up there and shake everybody. I'm sorry, it's how I feel. I am spending.
Thank you, Valerie.
Maybe the last few years of my life doing this.
Thank you, Valerie.
It is extraordinarily important.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jess?
Well, I have to say, in many ways, I feel similarly to what others have said, and I also understand this is a real tight rope that you guys are on as well. It's really tricky. How do you create a balance between creating an ordinance that's strong enough to protect us, and also not becoming a situation where the FCC just rolls over you and ends up putting up towers anyway, because they potentially could, even without you guys saying that's okay? So it's a very difficult situation, and I think that, you know, we've put tons and tons of time and work into this. There's a large community of people who have. So first of all, I want to thank you for the time that you've put into this with us. I really regret that Renee is not part of this discussion right now, and not part of this meeting or this vote, because she's been such an advocate for this. And I also regret that there are a number of people who can't be here tonight, because they're away, or they're on vacation, or wherever they are, and they couldn't be here. And I do wish there was an opportunity for those people to be here, because there's been such a long period of time where we've been working on this and contributing. And it makes the most sense to me for that, them all to be able to speak up if there's something they want to say. That said, I also think it's important to get this on the books and have a stronger ordinance, but I also feel like there are ways it can be a lot stronger, and concerns I have about what's in there. So there's a lot that looks great, a lot that still needs some attention, and I appreciate all the time you've taken to look at it, and I hope that those who aren't here now will have a chance to speak up and be heard when they're back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Bell, Domingo, Fairfax. I called Hannah earlier today to find out what the buffer zones, because I was looking, I couldn't find anything. Nothing online has it. She just asked around, and as I said, I should look at the packet. I went out in the hallway, 11 is missing, so there's no packet out there. But from what I'm hearing, there's a 50-foot buffer zone? Is that correct? There's a 50-foot buffer zone?
Why don't you finish your comments, and then we'll address that, Mark?
So, I mean, at other meetings, people were talking about 1,000-foot buffer zone, 1,500-foot buffer zone. You have a 250-foot buffer zone for a marijuana delivery, which nobody's going to see, and maybe like four or five drivers at max will be in and out of. This is something that's going to affect everyone. This means they could be across the street from every house in Fairfax. 50 feet is nothing. So, I mean, just right there, that should definitely have a larger buffer zone than that. And I think there are other ways to go about it. I haven't studied this issue nearly enough, so I'll leave it to Valerie and some other people. But to me, I'm looking at this thing, and I don't see any strength in it. That's it.
Okay. Did you want to speak on this topic?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So I haven't really been following this, but from what I've heard here, would any of the council members be comfortable having this in their own backyard? Because it sounds like there, it's going to be in some other people's backyards or close to it, if there is a 50-foot buffer zone?
Thank you.
So would you?
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on this topic? Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the council. Before we do that, Garrett, could you clarify the buffer zones? Because apparently.
Sure, I think there's some.
Even though we've gone over a lot, it's all getting mushed together.
Right, it's a little misunderstanding. So first of all, antennas are not, any 5G facilities are not allowed in any residential zone, whether on private property or commercial right-of-way. That probably eliminates 90% of the town. One buffer, the 50 feet, is from residents in commercial zones. So that's a recognition that there are residences in commercial zones where it's allowed, and it's a 50-foot buffer between the facility and the actual residence. In the commercial zones, there's also a 300-foot buffer from specific type of uses, which is, it's a daycare, schools, playgrounds, parks, ballfields, and medical facilities that has that 300-foot. Plus, in the ordinance, it also has a requirement that facilities need to be 1,500 feet apart. So you have 1,500 feet apart, not allowed in residential zones, in commercial zones where it is allowed, in certain commercial zones. Then you have a 50-foot buffer from residents, and 300 feet from certain specific uses.
Okay.
Oh, and it's not allowed on decorative poles, although, in your downtown area, although I guess they could do a replacement pole that allows for that type of option.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So with that, I'd bring it back for council deliberations, and Peter, did you want to go ahead?
Sure, yeah. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. It is a less-than-perfect situation. Our powers are limited by federal and state preemption. And while it is tempting to just say, you know what, we're just not going to allow it here, you know, the consequences of that could be, could be, leave us with absolutely no protections whatsoever. So it's a tough choice. I mean, on one hand, there's a certain appeal of sort of almost like community-wide civil disobedience, but hopefully some other brave town will take that step, and we'll see what happens. Given the imperfections, I think we did work long and hard on this, we did meet with 5G a lot, they had a lot of great recommendations. For my part, I tried to scour all the other ordinances and try to leapfrog past them. I think if you look at Fairfax's protections, they are a lot stronger than even in Santa Anselmo, which would allow, it's not, although not preferred, it's permissible to have 5G in residential. And I am heartened somewhat by another item on our consent calendar, that Senators Feinstein and Harris and even Schumer have signed on to the Senate version of the bill introduced by HR 530.
It's actually Senator Feinstein has introduced.
She introduced it.
In the Senate, that is similar to the unissued bill in the House.
Right, right. So that's encouraging, I mean, it's an election year, and I think they're starting to hear the discontent with 5G in Washington. So we'll see. In terms of addressing a lot of these things, unfortunately, that has to happen, I think, through an act of Congress. There are some opportunities for change with the upcoming elections, so we'll see. But, you know, I am satisfied that we've done a very good job of crafting an ordinance that works for Fairfax, that I think is the most protective for any community that I've seen so far in Northern California. So, and it is important to get it on the books, we can always revisit things as other issues come up, and as federal law changes, perhaps we'll have opportunities to make it even more robust.
Thank you, Peter. Would someone else like to just?
Well, I'll be brief, and just say that I do think we should adopt this in its second reading tonight, to get it on the books. And I echo a lot of the things that Peter just said about all the protections that we've attempted to put into it, and the work that we've done with people in the community who've been very, very helpful in these details. And just one other thing to say, that the, as far as not having had a chance to read this, this is almost identical to what was brought to us in the first reading, except for these very specific three changes, and then the changes of the numberings, which was a clerical thing, that as long as they were done correctly, that's no change in meaning whatsoever. But the three changes are detailed on the second page of the staff report, they're just those three, and those were what we discussed at the last meeting. So other than that, this is exactly identical to what was brought to us at the first reading. So this isn't really the first time the public has had a chance to see it.
Thank you, Bruce. John?
Well, I think my colleagues have also, you know, gone over it, you know, like any legislation. This in particular, I think, has so much community input, and we've gone back and forth and really, we narrowed it down to something that's pretty effective, and I think it's pretty good. I mean, yes, it's not a blanket, absolutely no, we're not going to do this, which, you know, leaves us open to a lot of legal challenges, and ultimately, as Peter mentioned, you may be left with nothing at the end of that process. So I think it's a pretty darn good example of community working together, and I'm proud to have this come out of this body, to be honest. So.
Thank you, John. So I just want to add, first of all, I want to thank everyone who has worked so diligently and provided us so much feedback. And like I said before, it's not going to be what everyone wants, but I think we've got something really strong here. I want to remind folks that I brought this several months ago, when I saw what the FCC was doing. So we first adopted the urgency ordinance to get something on the books, so that we did have control, some control. And there is some limits to our control, but I think we've got something very strong. And I'm supportive of what we have here before us with the supplement that makes some changes to the code numbers that the FCC had, just so that we're sure we're citing the right code. So with that, I would ask someone to make a motion. Peter, would you like to do that?
Sure, if you would like to, since it was yours.
No, mayor doesn't do that.
Okay.
I sit back.
Okay, very well then. I would like to make a motion to read by title only and adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax Consolidating Titles 19 and 20 Telecommunications of the Fairfax Municipal Code into a Revised Title 19, which establishes uniform and comprehensive regulations for wireless telecommunication facilities, and incorporating the changes set forth in the supplemental item 11B."
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to second that?
I will supplement that with a second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, that measure passes. Okay, so seeing none, that measure passes, and thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight, as well as previous nights. All right, I have a suggestion. Item 20 is looking at amending our smoking ordinances, and Bob Curry is here from the Smoking Secession Group of the county, as well as Smoke-Free Coalition, I believe that's, maybe that's not the right title. And Bob Curry has stayed with us till well beyond midnight in the past, to support us in adopting these ordinances. I think to get Bob home a little bit sooner, I would like to move item 20 before item 19, and I would like a motion to support that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we are taking up. So Bob, you may get to go home at a fairly decent hour, but probably not. Okay, so Garrett, would you like to do the staff report on item 20?
Sure. Maybe as background, you may recall, in your response to the Grand jury report regarding vaping, we indicated one of the findings was that the town amended its ordinance to include menthol-flavored products in the ordinance, in terms of banning that. I believe the mayor has also indicated in the past that's something she wanted to do. And so what we have here before you is the actual ordinance that kind of takes menthol-related product out of the flavored tobacco products that we allow. But what we actually did is, based on comments received from Smoke-Free Marin Coalition.
And Bob Curry from the Smoking Secession Group from the county?
Okay, and Bob Curry from the county, as well as legal counsel. What we did is, you have a supplemental on your dais that's actually a revised ordinance. And what that does is it reflects those changes, as well as additional changes from legal counsel. And specifically what we did, we kind of aligned definition language for tobacco products and other things to better match the county and other Marin jurisdictions. We beefed up the whereas clauses, and we eliminated the exemptions for pipe tobacco and tobacco, chewing tobacco. However, there are two exceptions that are still in there, you could choose to eliminate that if you like. And the other thing I wanted to point out, in the definition of tobacco products, it talks about electronic cigarettes. That's actually an example under another definition. So what we would do is, under tobacco products, the second, number two, under that definition, where it says electronic cigarettes, we would change it to say smoking, electronic smoking devices and paraphernalia, because we actually have a definition for that, of which electronic cigarettes is just an example of a smoking device, electronic smoking device. So with that, you have this before you. I think Mr. Curry would probably want to also offer some comments, but that concludes the staff report.
Okay, just one clarification, before I let the other council members ask questions. So thank you for the supplement, and I had specifically asked for those changes to the term electronic cigarette, because we didn't have that defined. But one area that I think is missing from the supplement is when we look, I have so many pieces of paper in front of me, I'm not sure what I have, but in the original item 20, there's a part of the code. there's a part of the code that is not included in the supplement. And that is Exhibit A, which deals with Article II Tobacco Retailers Licensing Ordinance. And that title is, this article shall be known as Fairfax's Tobacco Retailers Licensing Ordinance. And that area has an H, which talks about flavored tobacco products. And it also has the exemptions, the list of exemptions, not changed from what you did in the supplement. So because that exists, Exhibit A to the old document, which still has a list of requirements and prohibitions, and has a definition called H flavored tobacco products, and includes those old exemptions, my question is, was that a mistake? Because I think it was. And I could be wrong, but I'm a little confused because I have a lot of paper, and I've gone back and forth with you all on this several times.
So what we did was H is replacing its entirety with the new language. The red line was just showing, the original version was, we just struck the word menthol. But what we're proposing now in the new ordinance is that whole Section H gets replaced with your new Section H. So it's amended and restated. So that's where it's basically saying.
Okay, so it is taken care of. Okay.
Where does it appear in the supplemental revised?
That would be Section 2, sorry.
Section 2.
Section, oh, I'm sorry. Section 3, on Page 2 of the ordinance, it has definitions. And if you go down, oh, I'm sorry, Section 8, sorry. Section 2, 3, oops.
If you look at Section 4, Peter, in the supplement, okay, look at the supplement.
Okay, I see Section 4.
Looks like Section 4.
Sorry, we.
So it's Section 4 of the supplement, where it says flavored tobacco products. But above that, so that is, where is the characterizing flavor?
So here you go. Let me walk you through the ordinance, because we just realized when we did this, it didn't change the numbering. So it goes 1, 2, 3, and then it says Section 3 again. So we're going to have to change the numbering. So 3 becomes 4, 4 becomes 5, and so on. But if you look at the ordinance, in Section 3, it has all the definitions.
So the real Section 3?
Real Section 3 in the ordinance, the first 3, has all the definitions. All those definitions get added into the chapter. And so what happens is those definitions apply to the whole chapters, which has Article 1 and 2 in it.
And the key one that really calls out is the characterizing flavor. Is where it calls out all the different flavors include but are not limited to. So that's where we've got some new language. All right, and then now you say what's on Page 3 or 4, which has a Section 3, should actually be Section 4. And then Section 5 deals with flavored tobacco products. And it says the sale or distribution by a tobacco retailer of any flavored tobacco product is prohibited unless, and now you have two exemptions.
Two exemptions that were previously listed. An option for the council is just to get rid of them.
Yeah, and so I know I shouldn't be speaking first, but my feeling is we should get rid of all those exemptions. I think if we're really looking, if we're really looking to prevent things being attractive to kids with these flavors, from what I understand in talking to Bob Curry in the break, is that these packages of cigars, cigarillos, now the companies are reducing the price to something like $2, so they can start attracting kids. And so to me, there's no reason for us to have these exemptions because unfortunately, there's a strategy among these tobacco companies and e-companies to just really try to find any way they can find, you know, an audience and customer base that involves kids. So that's my thoughts. And just to be clear to the other members of the council, where you have the term tobacco product in the supplement under Item 2, where it says any device or component, part, that delivers nicotine alone, or blah, blah, blah. And then it has the words electronic cigarettes. We don't have such a term defined. So I had asked that we say that electronic smoking devices or paraphernalia, which we do have defined. So it just makes a change to make it more consistent with our lingo versus, this may have been language from the county where they defined electronic cigarettes. But ours is broader, because we're really looking at any of these kinds of devices. So I'm sorry I spoke up first, but.
No, thank you.
I had asked for this before you came to the grand jury, because I saw Bob Curry and some other smoking cessation folks a few months ago. And they pointed out to me that the menthol is really attractive to kids. So that was my mistake from the last time we brought this. So thank you for that. Other questions of staff, and I apologize for taking so much time. Okay, so with that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Hello again. I'm Krishna Menon. I'm currently a sophomore at Columbia University. I'm here today to talk about the tobacco flavor ban. I'm currently undertaking an internship where I study tobacco's effects on youth and work with the Smoke-Free Marin Coalition. I'm in favor of this menthol ban ordinance passing. A group of people that are almost always pushed to the periphery in discussions of flavored tobacco products are people of color. In the U.S., nearly nine out of 10 black smokers aged 12 years and older prefer menthol cigarettes, according to a 2013 study by the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Menthol cigarettes are not just easier to start on, they're also harder to quit. Menthol flavoring in cigarettes causes the lungs to expand further, which means that more of the carcinogenic and poisonous ingredients in cigarette smoke penetrate the body. This is a huge part of the reason why people of color, specifically black folks, are particularly at risk for addiction to flavored tobacco. According to research by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the FDA, African-Americans are more likely to die from smoking-related diseases than other groups, even though they usually smoke fewer cigarettes and start smoking at a much older age. The four leading causes of death amongst black communities in the United States are heart disease, cancer, stroke, and diabetes, all of which are exacerbated by regular tobacco use. According to research by the Bloomberg School of Health, the link between menthol cigarettes and black smokers is so strong that if a nationwide ban on menthol cigarettes was put into place, 44.5% of black smokers would quit smoking. Medical research by the University of California, San Francisco, shows that menthol cigarette smokers are less likely to quit than non-mentholated cigarette smokers, with lower rates of success amongst both black and Hispanic smokers. It is imperative to move forward with an exemption-free ban in order to decrease youth usage of these products here in Marin County.
Thank you very much.
Krishna, I had a question. So do tobacco companies specifically market menthol to minority communities? Is that why there's that disparity in consumption of menthol?
Yeah, so the study by the Bloomberg School of Health is not just on usage, it's also on advertising. So there were two factors that led to that increase. The first was that they found that tobacco companies were, I think, it was somewhere among 50 to 60% more likely to advertise menthol cigarettes in predominantly black-owned or black-purchased publications. And the second was that tobacco retailers were more likely to open up in predominantly minority populations, or racial minorities, I guess, but.
Well, thank you, Krishna. I think that's a really interesting point that hasn't been brought to us before. So I really appreciate you bringing that to us.
Thank you so much.
Okay, other speakers on this topic, Bob, or, I'm sorry, I forgot your colleague, but she'll say her name when she comes up.
Hi, it's Pamela Granger.
Oh, thank you.
And so Bob's with the Tobacco Related Disease Control Program. It sort of encapsulates tobacco use all in one handy title. So as the co-chair of the Smoke-Free Marin Coalition, just wanted to give you a little background for, Fairfax was semi-early adopter, early 2018 when this came forward. And there were some things going on at the time. You might vaguely recall that the tobacco company had, one of them, had taken San Francisco, they'd gathered enough signatures to create a ballot initiative in San Francisco to undo their flavored tobacco ban. And so at that time, a number of communities, yours included, you know, went through with flavors, kind of left mint and menthol alone. At the time, cigarettes can be sold in the U.S., cannot be sold with any flavor except menthol. And so it seemed kind of safe to go there as initial ban. As you might have followed, the citizens of San Francisco passed by like 78%, excuse me, 68%, upheld the ban in San Francisco. And it's just like, oh, phew, now we can go back to where we were. So we used their big bucks in terms of the ballot initiative process to give us some information. And in tobacco control, we sort of leapfrogged. So you might recall, we did smoke-free work bans. And then we realized if it wasn't good at work, it wasn't so good in the restaurant. If it wasn't good in the restaurant inside, wasn't much better outside. And then for sure, it wasn't good where we lived. So what we found is that as science has developed, we've learned that there are some issues. We've been following flavors a lot the past couple of years. So that was, you know, sort of the background for adding menthol. I see that there was a correction, and the state did increase the age to buy tobacco products from 18 to 21. That was cleaned up. And there was one thing, and I would echo the mayor's thought, flavored tobacco products, the exemptions. We started off saying, boy, if you can buy Swisher Sweets or Little Cigarrillos for cheap, the high school boys were selling, were, excuse me, they were probably selling too, but they were using small flavored cigars at a rate higher than cigarettes. So we go, great. And so the tobacco industry did respond, oh, if you have to have a pack of five, we used to be two for a buck, now we're going to make you five for $2. So, you know, so they're nimble, they're nothing. It's like whack-a-mole. You know, you hit them down here, and they're popping up over there. So we would concur that what worked before, you know, would perhaps be better adjusted. Some communities have taken, if you're going to have a single cigar, maybe you want to make it $7 instead of $5. You know, we're less wedded to that. So we welcome very much the opportunity to do updated language and to once again, you know, put you back on the top of what we know now and where we'd like to be. Anything we can do to reduce youth uptake is going to save us money and health in the long run. And so this is the best upstream investment that you can make. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you. And keep us posted as the nefarious marketing and addiction specialists of the tobacco industry, you know, hatch their next tricky little move.
Oh, absolutely. And I have to tell you that I have a daughter who graduated from UC San Diego for in marketing. And one of her professors said, if you want to know marketing, take a look at the tobacco industry, so.
I think I also watched the older movie called Thank You for Smoking, which is really a tale of, you know, it's a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but it seems pretty true. Okay, Bob Curry, thank you for being so selfless and supporting us.
And I just want to get up, I can't speak one way or the other on the ordinance before you, but I just wanted to, one, thank you for your leadership, because you and Nevada were the first two that passed an ordinance in North Bay. And we really thank you for that. You follow the example of San Francisco. But I also want to give you a heads up on what's been going on ever since the grand jury report came out. And we have been looking at how we can really tackle this problem with our young people. And this coming year, this past year, we were able to hire one full-time youth education coordinator who's gone out and done a tremendous amount of education in the community. Next year, we're going to have at least two youth coordinators full-time who will be able to go out. And one of those will devote a lot of her time to cessation, helping the young people that have been already addicted in our community, and there's a lot of them, to try and get them to, you know, stop with the addiction that they have. We also have put in for Department of Justice grants for enforcement. We have gotten a couple in the last few years, one Nevada, one with the County Sheriff's Department, and one with Central Marin Police. We just put in for two more, so that we could have school resource officers in the San Rafael schools and one for the Marin County Schools, Marin County Office of Education. And they also put in for another half-time youth cessation coordinator. So we'll hear within the next month or two if we got those grants. So that would be terrific. All of our partners, all the policy leaders in the entire county. There's one more community that has to pass a full flavor ban, but we're hopeful that they will also. But they've all followed your leadership and the county board supervisor's leadership. So we thank everybody for really chipping in. And we also have now some extra money from the county and from the state. So we're going to be putting a lot more money into community education and into media, some paid media. So we're really trying to tackle this problem. And again, it's a collective collaborative effort, and we thank you for being part of that.
Thank you very much, Bob. I think we would all hope that the FDA takes some leadership on the e-cigarettes at some point, but I think we've got a ways to go on that, but that'll be next.
Yeah, one other thing is the online. There are two bills that were in the Senate, Senate bills, both by Senator Hill. One was, one would be exactly what is before you this evening.
Is that California?
In California.
Right.
And that unfortunately was pulled, and hopefully next year they'll vote on that. And that was Senate Bill 38. Online sales is another area that we have a great concern. And so Senate Bill 39 is moving forward. And it doesn't look like it has much opposition. And that will require, just like alcohol, if it's delivered to the home, you have to show identification that you're 21, and the package itself will be labeled that it is a tobacco product. And if anyone violates that, there'll be a $1,000 fine.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for the information, Bob, and thanks for being so helpful during this process. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm just here to say thank you for moving this forward. Also as well, I wanted to mention a grant that we just applied for, for Ross Valley School District. They just got accepted this grant. So they have $114,000 a year for three years for tobacco education. So this will align with a lot of the efforts going on in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Eger-Medaway. Fairfax prohibits the use of alcohol in certain public places. This ordinance, it looks like it just controls the sales. It doesn't control the use. Is that correct?
Actually, the overall smoking ordinance does control uses in a number of places. And we've revised that in the past. I brought that here. So we added more prohibitions on outdoor.
So.
But this is just looking at the flavor, because we've done the other in the past.
In other words, could someone vape in the public park in Fairfax?
I don't think so. I think we prohibited that the last time. So you may want to.
How about in a parcade or on a street or sidewalks downtown?
Pretty much any place smoking is prohibited. Electronic smoking devices are also prohibited. So it's pretty much every public place.
We added more prohibitions in 2018, and so you kind of have to look at the whole chapter.
Okay, so is smoking prohibited in the public park right now?
Yes.
Okay, and vaping is prohibited in public parks?
Yeah, we added vaping. I brought that to us so we could make sure that we don't have vaping where we don't have smoking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. So did anyone else want to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'd like to bring it back. And I just want to clarify some of the changes we discussed before I bring it back for deliberations. So what we discussed is, number one, to renumber Section, there's two Section 3s, so renumber. So what we discussed is, number one, to renumber section, there's two Section 3s, so renumber the second Section 3 is four, and then Section 4 becomes five, old five becomes six, Section 6 becomes seven. Okay, that's one piece. Under tobacco product, instead of the term, under item two, instead of the term electronic cigarettes, we would have electronic smoking device or paraphernalia. And then I proposed, and I thought I saw concurrence, that where we have the term flavored tobacco products, number one would read, "The sale or distribution by a tobacco retailer of any flavored tobacco product is prohibited," period, taking out the unless and the two exceptions that are in the supplement. So just wanted to clarify the understanding of what we're doing. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, I just wanted to ask just a question.
Sure.
Because I agree with all of those changes, but the last one, the taking out of the unless and the A and the B exceptions, what were the, what was the original justification for how those exceptions, or the four exceptions, got in there in the first place? Where did that come from? Why are we creating, why were we creating those exceptions?
I think if, well, this was back in 2008, and at that time, when you were doing the changes, consultation at that time with, I think with Bob Curry, Mr. Curry, then it was determined that you wanted to have some exceptions for menthol, and these were acceptable type changes for the retailers, so it wouldn't be a huge hit to them in terms of sales. But obviously, as they indicated, things change, pricing's changed, different things has changed, and perhaps you might want to just get rid of the exceptions.
I think also Pamela pointed out, or Bob pointed out, this leapfrogging approach, and I think when we brought this before, we didn't catch this, so now we can. So would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would, but before I do, thank you Pamela and Bob for being so diligent on this and bringing us up to speed. Thank you Barbara also for bringing this to us and really showing a lot of leadership on this, not just for our town, but for the rest of the county. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to introduce and read by title only an ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of Fairfax, amending Chapter 8.44 of the Fairfax Municipal Code, Title 8, entitled Clean Indoor and Outdoor, and Outdoor Air and Health Protection Smoking Regulations to Prohibit the Sale of Menthol-Flavored Tobacco Products with the Changes Suggested by Mayor Kohler.
And the supplement.
And set forth in the supplement to Agenda Item Number 20.
Thank you. Would somebody like, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. Thank you, everyone. So now we are moving on to Item 19, and that is introduce and read by title only an ordinance to establish time limits for incomplete applications and project entitlement approvals by adding, so I just want to emphasize, this is really just dealing with time limits, adding Sections 17.020.130, time limits, extensions for design review, 17.032.100, time limits, extensions for conditional use permits, 17.040.100, incomplete discretionary permit applications, and 17.040.11, permit time limits and extensions, and amending Sections 17.028.090, lapse, renewal, term for variance, variances, and 17.060.090, time limits, extensions for ridgeline development, and consolidating and revising Sections 17.072.140 and 17.072.150, expiration and extension for the Hill Area Residential Development Overlay Zone, Sequel exempt per sequel guidelines, et cetera. I would also, before I ask for the staff report, I believe we're reviewing the agenda at this time, because we passed the 10 o'clock, and my suggestion is we continue to go forward. And I think we are good. So I apologize for missing the 10 a.m., but we're good to go. Do we need a motion for that to, no, I don't think we do. It's just when we look at 11:30. Okay, so with that, Director Berto, would you like to do the staff report? And thank you, first of all, I want to say this. Thank you to the Planning Commission, Planning Director and Staff for undertaking this very important thing to make sure that we do not have these applications lingering. And I think this is kind of the unsung work of the Planning Commission and stuff. It's not sexy or, but it's really important, so I want to say thank you before you do the staff report. And please extend our thanks to the Planning Commission.
I will do so. Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as noted, this will, in some ways, clarify our time limits and really establish it for zoning districts or provisions that, for which it doesn't exist, for both incomplete applications and project entitlement approvals. What's going on is, as far back as January and March of 2018, the Planning Commission worked on a work program for recommendations for the upcoming year, and that included recommendations relating to zoning amendments. One of those was to amend the zoning ordinance to establish time limits, to limit the time that a development application can remain incomplete. Your council considered the recommended planning work program and including zoning ordinance amendments in August of 2018, and also recommended proceeding with those zoning amendments. At their June 20th and July 18th meetings of this year, the Planning Commission considered draft ordinance amendments, which would establish limits to the amount of time, one, a development application can remain incomplete, and two, an approved project entitlement can remain valid. And at their July meeting, the Planning Commission did approve a resolution recommending placing those time limits, and a copy of that resolution has been attached to your In terms of the rationale for this, both the Planning Commission and the Town Council agreed previously that the application, it makes sense to limit the amount of time an application can remain incomplete, and that approved project entitlements can remain valid. It generally has a beneficial impact on overall application processing and planning operations in terms of a more streamlined, efficient, and effective processing. It's noted that the planning department, as of our last check, has 14 incomplete applications or approved applications that are currently inactive, and we're talking about in excess of a year. And it's noted that we did, at the request of the Planning Commission, send a notice to all such applicants and approved projects prior to the Planning Commission's July consideration of this item, and as anticipated, nobody showed up. And that's just the reality, is these projects are basically, they've been dropped. The challenge with these stale applications or approvals is threefold. First of all, it results in inefficient processing, where you have an extended time period between an initial application and if it's ever subsequently picked up. You lose the familiarity, regulations can change, certainly misunderstandings take place, especially where some of the regulations have changed. It's not so much an issue in Fairfax owing to the incredible tenure of our principal planner and her institutional knowledge of all things planning over span of decades. But typically, even for one particular planner who's been working on a project where you have this hiatus of months or really years, in some cases more than a decade, between the original application and final processing, you get all sorts of misunderstandings. It also raises the significant potential for inconsistency with applicable regulations. An example would be the application of a 3,500-square-foot limit to residential size, which your council has adopted within this last year. If somebody had come in, there is no such application, but if somebody had come in for an oversized house, it was deemed incomplete, and they chose to reinstate that application, we'd have to inform them that, oh, you cannot, we cannot approve that application under any circumstances without variances, et cetera. So that's an example of something where if some, if an extended period of time takes place, you start to have these disconnects between the regulatory landscape that is in effect when an application is initially submitted and when it may, if ever, get followed up on. In terms of procedural aspects, staff intends and will, in fact, inform application, applicants about any project expiration. We'll do this a number of ways. The first is in our initial project status letter that informs them that their application is incomplete. We do so within 30 days, so that will contain a notice. We will also follow up with written notice to applicants prior to the expiration of that application or approval. And it's noted that one of the provisions in this new regulation is they do have the option of requesting an extension. Certainly, for example, when we were going through the Great Recession where people's economic situations changed drastically, that would be an example of where we would probably, on a more or less blanket situation, say, yeah, you know, we'll just continue that until people's, you know, until times improve. But there are other examples. For example, when we initially discussed this with the Planning Commission, two of the commissioners who are architect noted that a number of the technical studies that typically accompany or can accompany planning applications, surveys, geotechnical information, can take many months to secure. And so they determined that that original 90 days should be 180 days with the potential to extend that for another six months. And so in looking at the grounds for granting an extension, as shown in the proposed provisions, that would be an example of something that would be a valid reason for an extension. All they would have to do is show that, look, we're working with this person and we haven't been able to receive that information yet. So we do have provisions that allow for extensions for good reason. The recommended zoning amendments that the Planning Commission is recommending would deem an incomplete project application expired after 180 days. So basically, half a year after initial submittal, and again, as noted, we do provide a project status letter within 30 days of that initial application. As long as an applicant is moving forward with that project or providing us with a reason, we would be willing to extend that period of time, and we would do that for an additional year. So they would basically have a year and a half to complete an application, and they would have to simply give us notice in writing requesting that extension with the reasons stated, and we would more than likely consider that extension. In terms of the other aspects of the proposed zoning amendments, it's noted that we have expirations already in place in this ordinance. One of the difficulties with this ordinance is there's provisions that get adopted at different time periods, and so, whereas the town has previously said, yeah, for design review and variances.
We may not have to have that level of detail.
Okay.
I think what you're trying to point out, that there's inconsistencies.
Correct.
And I think the other thing you pointed out in the staff report is that where there's code enforcement matters, you're proposing, the Planning Commission is proposing, a shorter time limit.
That's correct.
And, which is 60 days, and then an additional 90 days potential extension, and these are enforcement matters, so that seems important. So I, I don't, I know there's a lot of detail in here, but we may want to.
Okay.
Cut to the chase, as we say.
Sure. Yes, absolutely. The hour is growing late, and I appreciate that reminder. So these are the recommendations of the Planning Commission, and what it's doing is more or less consolidating and making consistent all of the different types of applications and their timelines, and those are the recommendations, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much. That was very detailed. Would any council members have questions of staff? Peter?
Sure. Ben, what are, what's the range of current time limits now for applications and for building permits, as far as like how long can someone sit on it without losing the application being denied or the permit expiring?
Well, for building permits, generally speaking, you have to call, under the California Building Code or Construction Codes, you have to call for inspections every six months. Let me dive into the variance chapter, and I'll find the timeline that that, within which that would expire.
Yeah, I'm just, was just kind of wondering about that. And then how does this affect, this goes into, this gets enacted, how does it affect already stale permits or already stale applications? Do they get some kind of notice that there are new time limits?
We would treat any application that was basically subject to this, we would treat it as though they had just started to go up against our time.
As of the day of enactment?
Yes.
So really, in about a year, it'll.
We would provide those people with that time period.
Right, okay. And then have we gotten input from contractors and architects, et cetera, that these time limits are feasible?
We have not received any comments from that. I did not send anything to the Marin Building Exchange either. It is noted that the County of Marin, and I believe at least one or two other jurisdictions, there may be more, currently have similar time limits.
That's my next question, so we're not like, it's sort of.
No, this is not an unusual.
Okay, and then I don't know if you covered this already, but it seems like it would be a good practice, if this is enacted, to just send out a form letter to all the applicants just saying, hey, this new law is in effect, and it could affect your permit or your application. So I think it would just be fair to give people a heads up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? It's not necessary. If you don't have questions, we can open it up to public comment.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically my concern, is not having these too tight. I mean, it was kind of covered with your question, but have you looked at other jurisdictions also?
I think you said you did.
Yeah, you looked at the county, right?
Yes.
But are there any small, I mean, it's important to get feedback from the users of this. I mean, just as, you know, that would be my only concern.
I think one of the things that I want to just add is, I think six months is quite a bit of time, and also there's a possibility for extension, so it's not shutting the door. And so I, I think, you know, the county tends to be pretty free and easy with a lot of these things, but we, we have more one-on-one. I think Peter's suggestion about sending a notice out to people who have applications is really important, but I think, to me, these seem like pretty good timeframes, and I sort of trust the Planning Commission to really have gone over that in detail. But that's my thoughts. Okay, I'd like to open it up to public comment on this matter.
Hello, I'm the public comment. There have been two other incidents of public comment during the Planning Commission. I was both of them.
Okay.
So now I'm the third one.
Great.
So first thing I'd like to say, if you have not, if the Town Council has not reviewed the video of the meeting, which this was approved at by the Planning Commission, they really need to. The minutes have not been approved yet. However, I However, I'll briefly describe how this, this particular ordinance was approved by the Planning Commission. First, it started off by saying there were only five members present. Both the architects, who had made suggestions regarding the necessary time to process meetings, were not present at the meeting this was approved. At the introduction by staff, it was stated that all five remaining members had to agree or else it would have to be continued at a later meeting. When the time came to vote for this after the discussion without the two architects, that it was mentioned that we want to get this off our plate. There were four in agreement, the fifth caved, okay, in order to achieve it, to get it off the Planning Commission's plate and to forward it to the town council. There, because of this, there are some flaws, okay? At the, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a, the, the way I remember it is this was going to be retroactive. In other words, it was slightly different to, to how the planning director describes it now. In other words, I don't see the language in the writing, and I would, I would like you to look at it yourself, that it, that the clock starts running for existing cases, all 15 of them, okay? So this is a, a real big problem. There are 15 cases over the last eight years with this is applying, but yet we're adding clauses such as enforcement cases, which none of these cases are. That's a, that's a, a way to include something, some other condition, which is not the problem this is meant to solve. And by doing that, the enforcement cases don't have 180 days. And more than half of the Planning Commission, the permits seen by the Planning Commission at this very meeting and the meeting before it, where the first reading of this were, were enforcement issues. In other words, they were not permitted. So this happens a lot more than you would think. So that means many of these cases fall under the enforcement, which means they only have a 60-day following the date of, of the deemed incomplete and a total of 150 hard days, not 360. I think that the clause that says enforcement cases should be, should be considered by the town council to be struck, or at least if it's not struck right now, to look at it and say, let's make sure this reads right, because further down under sub-paragraph C, if a, after a discretionary permit application has been determined to be complete, the town may require the applicant to submit additional information, but yet there are no consequences.
Okay, Rick, thank you for your comments, but you've used your time, so I appreciate.
And, and you know, the clock said two minutes, but it says two to three minutes.
Actually, it's three minutes and 37 seconds.
Actually, Barbara, since he's the only one commenting, I'm finding his, I would like to hear.
I think we have, we have folks here waiting for the next item, so let's bring it back.
Well, if it's just a minute or so, I would very much be interested in this also.
All right, go ahead, but one more minute, that's it.
Thank you. Well, to continue on the discretionary part, it, this is really unclear and this needs to have some wordsmithing done, is because what it essentially says is, is once it falls into that stage where the, where the planning department has said, we need additional information, there are no consequences, there is no new timeline, there's no, nothing about a reset. In other words, the flow chart does not go back to the, to a previous point in the flow chart. Okay, so what you have is an open loop and that open loop needs to be closed.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, bringing it back, it sounds like there's been some good points raised and I want to assure you though, where there's only a limited number of Planning Commissioners in the past where they needed a certain number, this is, they just haven't done it. So I wouldn't characterize somebody as caving because they haven't done that in the past on 5G and I believe on cannabis where they need a certain number. But I suspect that people are going to ask you several questions based on Mr. Hammer's comments. One is, where is the clause that you just discussed when Peter asked, what do we do with the, the applications that are happening now? And you said we would start them at the day of the effective date. Mr. Hammer pointed out that, at least in the Planning Commission, they said it would be retroactive. So I'm not sure if that's characterized correctly, but maybe you can point out where that section is?
Yes, just to clarify that, the, the term retroactive means that for applications that were currently beyond the time limits now, it would apply to that. What I was clarifying with Peter was that what we would do is treat those as though they were coming up to their time limits now, so we would afford them the opportunity to apply, for example, for an, an additional extension.
And is, is there a provision in the code that makes that clear?
Not, not as specifically for existing, I would just simply say that as a procedural item, that's what we intend to do and I would be more than happy to be held to some sort of accounting for that. So if Mr. Hammer wants to.
Well, I think, I'm not asking Mr. Hammer to do that. I think the question is.
Yeah, there's no.
And I would ask council, do we need to have specific language to make sure if Mr. Berto leaves tomorrow, that we are able to start the clock for people as of the effective date of the ordinance, not going back and saying, well, you've been sitting here six months? I don't think the way our ordinances work, they can actually go back like that, but council, would you like to opine on that?
Certainly, if it's a, a matter of interpretation and implementation of an ordinance, you know, the council can give direction on that, on how you want it implemented. And so you can, you can say that that's, that's a perfectly fine implementation procedure and that's how we can implement it. It never hurts to add clarifying language to it, but it doesn't necessarily have to have it.
Well, I think it, I'm sort of suspecting, I'm not, I can't speak for the council members, that we would prefer clarifying language. I think that would be just clear to everyone. But I spoke first and I shouldn't have done that, so I will open it up to council members for deliberations or further questions of staff that you might have based on what you heard in public testimony. Did you want to go, Peter?
Yeah, I, I thought Richard raised a couple of good points and I appreciate that, Richard. And yeah, I think it would be good to have that kind of clarifying language because it sort of is changing the due process rights of existing people. So I think it'd be good to have that kind of language. And then I, I get the purpose of this, it's, it's fish or cut bait, which, which I think is good public policy because you don't want applications hanging out too long. And I've seen Linda's office and it's like a giant game of Jenga with all these plans about to topple off the filing cabinets. So I, I am concerned though, that, I, I wonder if the enforcement cases, if that is not enough time, I would like to understand a little bit about why that's such a shorter time and, you know, is that too short a time? That, that would be a concern of mine. I'm just trying to think of the homeowner who, you know, gets into some kind of trouble on a permit or gets red-tagged and, oh my God, I can't get a contractor and, you know, what am I going to do? Is that, 90 days seems like it's a, maybe kind of a short fuse if it's a real significant project.
Yes. In, in looking at the specific provision, it's 90 days, but they can request an extension for an additional 90 days. So in es, in essence, they get half a year to submit material. So in that, the idea behind that was to recognize that if, if you weren't in an enforcement situation, there should be a more stringent timeline to apply to those violations than a normal applicant. Otherwise, you, you remove an incentive or a disincentive against doing bootleg work. So this does provide that incentive to move it quicker and yet it still gives people 180 days to complete the application, which generally speaking, you're going to be able to obtain those type of technical reports if indeed you're pursuing them in good faith.
And is there a provision to go beyond an additional 90 days?
Well, as a practical matter, again, people can always bring in documentation to say that, you know, for whatever reason, sometimes it's, it's circumstances beyond their control. It may, for example, require somebody else to be submitting with them. Those things may drag out the timeline, so there's going to be some sort of procedural or processing discretion. And those type of situations, I think we would be capable of making a determination. Frankly, the, the main problem that we run into sometimes with enforcement cases is they're building something that they wouldn't have been able to get permission for. And so it's really just a question of getting a complete application to get up before the Planning Commission so that they can make that determination. It's, 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 it's a challenged project, so you could get a situation where somebody's deliberately foot dragging.
Just one thing to clarify, you said 180 days. It's actually not that for the enforcement, it's 60 days and then 90 days.
Excuse me, that's right.
So it's 150 days.
I apologize, yes, 60 and 90.
And if you wanted to make a change to give them a little more time, you could say 90 and 90, which, but I, I agree that some of these enforcement cases are very difficult because we have people that build things unpermitted and then they don't have a lot of incentive to fix it. So, okay, well, anyway, I'm sorry for speaking again. John, did you want to speak on this matter?
Yeah, I mean, it, it does, a lot of the objections that were brought up, I think, I think it's really important to get a lot of input before we do these changes and obviously a lot of them seem important and logical from your, from where you sit, but I think in a practical way, I mean, you have to deal with, you know, how builders and architects and the reality of it is, is that with the economy doing what it's doing right now, everything's really expensive, everything, everybody's really busy and, and those are facts on the ground. And I think one of the other situations that comes up is that you have somebody with a, a project that they've been trying to work out how to do, you know, they may not be able to afford it, afford to do the project, but they have this piece of land and they want to get an approved set of plans there and then sell whatever it is with that approved thing. But if it has a short fuse on it, that you have to take action right, right away, I mean, that piece of land would probably sit on the market for several years, you know, at the rate they move. I mean, we'll, we'll see what this one behind Victory Village is like, because, you know, raw land like that, you know, it requires a lot of work and there's a lot of unknowns. And I think that's one of the reasons why somebody who has a piece of land that they're trying to sell in some way, you know, and, you know, maybe they, they had it for, you know, 10 years or whatever they had it for, and they're just saying, wow, you know, I got to unload this thing, I can't afford to do what I had in mind. But they'll, they will put together some sort of a product that, that is okay with the Planning Commission. And then to have that expire after six months or something like that, you know, it, it might, I mean, not, not that I necessarily want to encourage, you know, the speculators or something like that, but that's, that's one way that people make things work.
If I could briefly.
Could be an unforeseen circumstance and there may well be others like that.
Ben can respond.
Yeah, it's, for approvals, it's one year with an extension of another year. So again, the Great Recession, you know, everything went in the tank, nothing was selling, you know, that's a situation where we would likely just waive any time limits. Typically, if you've got a, a realistic value on, on something where you're trying to sell an approved project entitlement, you know, with the property, two years seems like it would be a reasonable period of time if you're reasonably priced.
Well, it seems like it, but, you know, I, I have a, you know, I'm not entertaining that idea at all, but, you know, I have a, a search engine that things for sale in Fairfax come up, you know, so I get to know about them, you know, it's just one of these free things that they have. And, you know, that's so, you know, lots, especially in Fairfax, you know, I want to know what's going on. So, you know, so I get a little email when something comes on the market and you can also look and see what they're all are. And they sit there for years. I mean, they, it's, I mean, yeah, it's a hot real estate market right now and, you know, and it's making all kinds of problems for our community, like unaffordability, it's just one of them, rental things. But, but the things that are not moving are lots. I mean, you know, there's one or two that get.
But lots with entitlements are something different versus a straight lot that somebody's trying to sell. With entitlements is kind of a big deal and what Ben's pointing out is basically you're looking at potentially two years. So a lot with entitlements, if you have entitlements and you haven't sold it, you may need to refi and you may need to build, but that's different than just selling a one acre, two acre, five acre.
Well, what I'm saying is I've seen lots with entitlements sit there on the market for several years. I'm just saying that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, it, it's just important to take these, you know, various things into account, which from the planning department's perspective, you, you won't see that so much. So it's, it's just important to get input from a lot of different sources and, you know, frankly, it concerns me that the full Planning Commission wasn't there, you know, and like, oh, we got to move this along. And yes, I can see it's important to move things along, but it's also important to have a comprehensive understanding of all the factors.
Okay, thank you. Bruce, did you want to speak on this item?
No, except just to, to say with regard to just that conversation, that I guess I'm understanding the perspective of the Planning Commission in that if, if someone is selling a lot with an entitlement that's very old, then that entitlement may actually not be accurate anymore. And so whoever buys it might discover to their surprise that the thing didn't have the entitlement they thought it did because the legal landscape has changed.
And I think Ben pointed that out, that we end up with these situations where the regulations change. But go ahead, Bruce, sorry to interrupt you. Okay, so my comments are this. I think we should, I think we should definitely add that clarifying language about things currently in the process. I'd like us to reach out to architects, building, Builders Exchange to get their feedback on this. I would say for enforcement folks, I think I'd change this to 90 and 90 days versus 60. I do feel that the reasons you pointed out, so we're not going to do the first reading tonight, really, I think we need to have this again, but I think in between time, really like you to reach out to some architects in the area, the Builders Exchange, and get more feedback on this so that we get a little more ground truthing on what the Planning Commission thought. And I know the Planning Commission didn't do this in one meeting, so there's been a little more thought put into this and I think, you know, Peter sat on it for eight years, I sat on it for a couple of years, Bruce was on there for a couple of years? And we also get very frustrated with these projects coming in and have been sitting or the illegal builds that we're trying to make right, let's move them along. So I think there's really good intentions here, but do you guys feel comfortable with my direction to staff, reaching out more?
Yeah, I do. I, it makes a lot of sense from sort of the town side of the counter, but I'd like to get the perspective of homeowners and contractors and architects on the other side of the counter. Just, I, I don't feel 100% confident, these timeframes seem like they'd be good, but I'd like to, I would like to get the other input.
I'm not sure if we can get the homeowners, but I think if we can get the Builders Exchange and the architect.
Yeah, well, when I said the, the homeowner's perspective, I was just talking, you know, generally the.
Okay, so let's reach out, so for our next staff report, let's have more of that kind of feedback and really, you know, get a better sense from those folks, get that clarifying language. clarifying language, consider, Mr. Hamer brought up some really good points about his concerns about enforcement, but I'm, I'm kind of feeling personally that I think there should be shorter timeframes, I think we could extend them a little bit. But we're not there tonight, and we appreciate all your work going into this and the planning commissions. And so is that enough direction for staff to go forward?
And, and I'll just say that the general direction that you and the planning commission are, are trying to take in a lot of different ways of trying to clean up some of our ordinances, make them more internally consistent and somewhat streamline processes within the department so that you're not fighting mountains of paper that are piled up and toppling over. I agree with all that, and I, I know that was always on our agenda when I was on the planning commission, and I agree with that general thrust. So, thank you for that. And yes, I agree that this, we can get some of those things clarified, this would be a better ordinance, but--
And John, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to underline that, yes, I think your intentions are exactly right, it's just good to get them comprehen--
So, thank you, you have enough from us? Okay, thank you very much. So we're moving on to item 21, and I will need to recuse, I live within 500 feet of the property. So I will be leaving the dais and I will be turning the meeting over to John Reed, who is our most senior council member, to run the rest of the meeting. And I'm sure he will do that with his greatest expertise, so give me a minute to take off.
Okay, I'll wait until you've vacated the area.
Okay, so maybe a quick break. Miriam, we have to do a little staff report too, so--
Yeah.
You may want to take your seat for a moment. I'm sorry, it could have been later.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Okay, we're ready to go. The next item is the last item on our agenda, item 21. And that is a discussion of the residents' petition submitted per town code for town to sue Resources for Community Development for breach of contract. And Garrett?
Sure.
Your staff report?
Yes. As you're aware, per our town code, if the residents get a petition signed by 25 residents, then it needs to be placed on the next council agenda. And that's what we've done, we've placed this on the agenda. The petition, as you indicated, concerns the acquisition of the 18 acre parcel at Victory Village. The petition states that RCD promised to donate the 18 acres from Victory Village to the town, and since that they reneged on that promise, that they're asking the town to basically file suit against RCD. So I think it's important to provide a little more background on the actions taken by the council. And really, there was never agreement to donate the property. You may recall, it's a while back at your May 2017 meeting, when you approved all the initial project approvals for the project, RCD actually stated, hopefully, that they'd be able to secure additional financing, would then, would allow them to fill the gap and then donate that property to the town. At that meeting, they did indicate they did get some additional funding from Marin Community Foundation, but that was project based, not specifically for the land transaction. However, so, RCD did said, hopefully, they had hoped to do that and worked with staff on that. But you may recall, the council actually approved the tentative parcel map, they actually created the three parcels, two acres for Victory Village, as it's being developed now, and two nine acre parcels, because it wasn't clear that could actually happen. Because typically for projects, especially affordable housing, you need to secure all your financing first, plus you're, all your financing in order to determine what you can and can't do. And obviously, they weren't able to do that until more like 2018. But you may recall, back in October 2018, the council actually approved the final parcel map for the project. And with that, that's the two acres and the two nine acre parcels. At that time, RCT indicated that, one, that due to significant increases in construction costs, unfortunately due to the fires in Northern California, and that the state and federal tax credits that they actually acquired was a lot less than they thought they would receive due to a variety of reasons. And so what RCD said is that they were unable to really donate that property, which is voluntary, there was no requirement for them to do it because you couldn't impose such requirements for the project. They indicated that they were unable to do that. The county gave them a loan, interim loan, for a million dollars to help fill that funding gap secured by those properties, in which case they have to sell them in the future. But RCD voluntarily offered to the town that in lieu of a donation, it would actually give us access easements. So we have a 20-foot access easement along the trail on the property, and then 150-foot access easement along the ridge line for that property. We're thinking that's about two, three acres if you were to add up all the property, but that's just an estimate. But that's what RCD did voluntarily. So again, to be clear, there wasn't any agreement, it was hopeful that they could, hopefully donate the property if everything lined up. Everything didn't line up, and what they did was they gave a public access easement to the town, and that's actually recorded on the parcel map. So I just wanted to make that clear as, you know, you're considering comments from the public. But that's pretty much the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Are there any clarifying questions from my fellow council members?
No, no questions.
No? Okay, well, then I would open the public hearing part of this.
I want to respond that I watched the video where Alicia Klein said, we are donating it. She did not say hopefully. You guys questioned her, you said, is this really happening? And she said, yes, it is. And then she said, we will get our attorneys, the town's attorney, and our attorney to draw up the paper. That is a promise. That is not a hopefully, you can go back and she's, Bruce, I remember specifically and John, both said to her, is this really happening? And that kind of greased the wheels for that final approval, which they were probably going to get anyway. But she said, have the attorneys draw up the agreement. That's a promise, that's not hopefully. You can go back and watch the video, that's what she said. So now I'm going to read my piece, which is, I admit I may have the particulars wrong, like I didn't know about the subdivision, the way it was made in the beginning, but the gist is the same. Alicia Klein promised these 18 acres would be open space and our attorneys would work together. It was nearly a year later when they reneged on the deal. Why wasn't anything done? It's not a matter of interpretation, watch the video. She did not say hopefully. They were very specific, is this happening? Yes. And I don't know why it wasn't written into the approval, because you guys were clear that you wanted it, you liked it. And I don't think RCD's ever been a very honest partner. They were constantly misrepresenting things to the town, constantly. I called them on things, and they said, well, yes, actually, you're right. Like, what was it? Oh, Corden Madera, everyone's local in their senior housing, 84% people from Marin, so don't worry, it's going to be local. And I said to them, excuse me, that project was done at a different time, when there was no outreach to adjacent communities being required, counties. And they said, well, actually, that's true. They knew it when they were saying it to us, they were constantly knowing us.
If you could keep your test in going towards not--
Okay.
--disparaging other parties, that would be good.
Okay, well--
I mean, just the facts, and that'd be good.
Okay, I know the construction expenses went considerably during the multi-year process, but the fact is, while these apartments are going to be affordable to the seniors living there, they're a full market rate, and then some for 500 square foot apartments in Fairfax. RCD and their investors will be going to the bank with $2,200 a month, possibly $2,300 a month per apartment. They will not be hurting, they will be partying. I realize there doesn't seem to be any particular interest in getting back the 18 acres, but it was promised to us that project contributed to the approval and open space it should remain. We want you, in the few months left before the year time limit is up in October, to pull back on that subdivision approval, ask for an injunction on the sale of those two lots, and do whatever is needed to regain the open space status. And I'll leave it there. So maybe the town council can go check those videos again and see whether she said hopefully. I don't know why she would tell the town to have the attorneys draw something up if it was only hopeful, and then it might change in six months or nine months or a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other people who would like to speak to this here?
I think it's me, but the petition was signed by more people.
Seeing none? Oh, yes.
Just because they're selling or trying to sell pieces of property that are open space, you know, when the property is not suitable for development because it's landlocked, and this doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have two more houses out there, they could be used for things like mitigation banks and stuff like that, where they could remain as open spaces, they're just privately owned. I think when the town negotiated a right of way, an easement in order to get around Victory Village, that this, and the town accepted that, that right of way, it kind of makes this story of the RCD a little bit more plausible, because why would the town need that, that piece years later unless they knew that this donation was not going to happen? So I, I think that, yes, it needs to be looked at more carefully. I have not been able to look at it very carefully, but what I do remember, because I was at some of those meetings, is that there was a lot of conversation regarding right of refusal, not donation. No, yeah, the term donation could have come out, but I remember that Katie Wasinki went through great depth of right of refusal in multiple periods of the video. So it just seems to, this is not straightforward, oh, yeah, they reneged. There are, there are other possibilities here that need to be carefully looked at before we actually file a complaint against RCD. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak to this issue? You've had--
I have four minutes, because I represent the group.
Well, I think you've, have you had four minutes already?
I don't think so. I just want to say that--
I don't have a clock up here.
There's a, there's a one-year limit in which you can do this, so I'm asking that the town try to get an injunction, which gives us more time to deal with the situation so that if a buyer comes up in the next 90 days, that's about all we have, maybe, not even 90 days. So time is of the essence, and I would just appreciate, I know earlier on they were talking about right of refusal, but that day, that meeting, the discussion was not about right of refusal, it was about donation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no further interest from other members of the public to talk to this, then I'll close the public hearing section of this. And, let me see, I guess are there further statements by, it's Peter?
Real brief comment. Charles Cornwell wrote a letter to the board of supervisors back in June of 2018 with respect to them lending money on the, for the rest of the project. And the supervisors were sort of the ones, the impetus to request that RCD sell those two parcels in order to fund the rest of the property. Anyways, Charles wrote a letter, and he paraphrased or quoted the comments by Ms. Klein. And I, I didn't go back to check them, but I'm assuming that this is what she said, and I think Charles would be careful in quoting it. She said, I'm happy to note, very happy to note that RCD has applied for a grant that would enable us, comma, hopefully, to donate actually all of lots two and three, the hillside behind Victory Village to the town for really big open space parkland. And I just got the email as I arrived here that the grant was approved this very afternoon. Yay, the timing could not have been better, right? So that's really wonderful, we look forward to, town, we look forward to working with town staff to figure out how to make that happen. So, and Charles went on to, in his letter to the county supervisors, to say that, characterized that as a charitable pledge. And I think that's, that's what it was, was a, you know, a charitable pledge, that's not a, a contract, that's not a promise. The language, hopefully, indicates that there was no, you know, promise to do that. Also, it came up, it did literally come up at the last minute, I, I heard about it at the hearing. And for me, it wasn't a consideration in approving the project, it wasn't like, okay, we'll approve this if you give us two parcels of open space land. So there wasn't consideration, there wasn't an exchange of value of getting this promise of land that would make that an enforceable contract anyways. And a land, this isn't a contract, it was a approval of a development project. So it's suing for breach of contract really just wouldn't be an appropriate legal remedy to pursue, even if it were, if, if there was a basis for it being an oral contract. And, and it, I just, it simply wasn't. And so I don't think it would be, we were all disappointed that we didn't, that the open space dedication didn't happen, but it, it would not be a viable lawsuit. And I, as an attorney, could never sign off on something like that. And I know that as a councilperson, that, you know, hoped for dedication of land wasn't a consideration for me approving the project. If it had happened, that would have been great, but I approved the project on its own merits, so. And if you do feel, you know, really strongly about this, you know, perhaps you could explore seeing if you can enforce that somehow as a, you know, as a citizen. You could talk to some land use attorneys and see if you feel that you have some legal rights that way. But I just don't think it's viable, and it would not be a good use of the town's resources to pursue that kind of a case.
Bruce, do you have thoughts?
No, I just, I, thank you, Peter, that was very well said. And, yeah, I agree with those points. And I, I have not re-watched the videos, but my recollection of, of the process was that it wasn't a promise and it wasn't a finished thing, it was like this has come up as a possibility that might well happen, and we were all happy to see that. But definitely, as, as you said, Peter, and I think it's really a key point, that that was not what swung the balance toward approval. We were approving it on the merits of the application and the merits of what it would be, what it would do for Fairfax to have affordable senior housing. And that's, that's what it was about. And that's, that's what it was about. So, yeah, I agree with all your points. But especially the, the legal point you make, that it's really not, not a suit that we would prevail in. It's not something that, it's not a, how did you put it? It's not an exchange of value. That's not what it was. It was us approving a project because it met the qualifications of a project, and that's what we're supposed to do anyway. So, it's not, you know, it's not a tit-for-tat thing.
Yeah, I think, actually, that tit-for-tat, I think it's quid pro quo, is it not the legal term?
Tit-for-tat, quid pro quo is Latin for tit-for-tat.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's it. I'm not a lawyer.
It literally is.
Yeah.
My name is Susan McConalog, and I'm a 48-year resident of Fairfax. And I think that it's going to really affect the quality of life for not only the people living at Victory Village, but for the town of Fairfax, that they don't have this possibility of this, this extra open space, and that if there's any question of a doubt, I think that you should explore that video and the promise that was made, and, and not, you know, not just cast it off as, as being not important. And so, that's just my input as a citizen of Fairfax. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Yeah, even though I had closed the public hearing, I think it's appropriate to hear from everybody, so, thank you. Yeah, I mean, ordinarily, you wouldn't decide the merits of whether taking legal action or not is the right thing to do in an open session like this. It's like, usually, that's something you plan strategy with. I did watch the tapes, and it took a while. I mean, these meetings do take a while, and it's, and, you know, and I thought that in the May 3 meeting, that there was clear happiness on pretty much every council member's statements, that it was kind of the icing on the cake. You know, but I think that, as, as Peter and Bruce stated also, we had a lot of things that we were all considering about that project at that time. And it wasn't whether or not that open space was there. Obviously, all of us wanted to have that be open space. And in fact, as was pointed out earlier tonight, it may well be open space. We don't know at this point. And, you know, they're, they're trying to sell these mostly, I wouldn't call them unbuildable lots, but really, the, the useful things at the bottom, especially with the senior community there, are what was the basketball court for the school and the outside amphitheater, the little, you know, there was a stage and some, and some seating there. And I think those would be useful to the community, too. Whether they're a million dollars' worth of useful to the community, I mean, that's, that's a big price to pay. I mean, I think they're, they have high hopes to frankly, get a million dollars out of that, but that's the money, that's the amount that they're short. And so, that's the price tag you're seeing. It could well be, in lieu of going at it in terms of a lawsuit combative stance, that the way to create, to effectively do that is to work with the county and, you know, turn over various different rocks to see if there is some way to work it out in a different way, so that they can preserve the financing for that without having to also get lawyers rich at the same time.
John, I think it's not really useful to speculate about, you know, possible uses for the, for that, or just focus on the issue at hand.
Yeah, and in fact, that's good legal advice, yeah. At any rate, I, I should probably close it there. I don't think there's a lot more to say, but I thank you for bringing this to us. And is there anything more from staff that I should? Okay. Well, in light of that, there are council reports and comments which are actually in the packet.
Yeah, do we have a...
Yeah, it's listed here, but there is a town manager's report. Do you have anything to report, Garrett?
So, if the council, per your policy and your reports, you know, you, the whole concept was, you wouldn't say everything you gave us in writing, but if you wanted to focus on one thing, you could. And it is, I guess, well, I don't know. I don't even know if it's worthwhile to talk about the 1130 rule.
Well, it's 1131, yeah. I think we're pretty much at the end there. Any future agenda items that people would like to see on the agenda?
Do we want to have a discussion? I'm not sure we even need a policy, but it seems like we needed one tonight about council members occasionally, and I would say very occasionally, not frequently like in WWD, but occasionally calling into a council meeting. Do we want to, is it, I'm, I'm asking you, Garrett, primarily, because it sounded like that was part of the consideration in this discussion about whether Renee could call in, is whether we had a policy. So, do we need to develop a policy?
You can choose to have that discussion in a future meeting, or you could just make it a retreat topic for next year in February or March, when you conduct, conduct your retreat.
Well, personally, I think it would be good to have a policy. I mean, it certainly, the last instance that it came up was when my mother was dying, and so I went to be with her. I happened to be the mayor at the time, so I could make the call. I mean, it was a special meeting, and I called in by, you know, watching it on the internet and talking on a cellphone. It had some technical difficulties with doing that. I mean, there's a delay which increased as the, as the meeting went on, which made it, towards the end of the meeting, close to impossible to answer questions in real time, because somebody'd ask you a question, you wouldn't hear the question until 10 seconds later, and at that point, I'd say, "Well, I guess they're not answering." But I think it would be useful to have it as an agenda item myself.
So, you would like, like it as a future agenda item just sometime this year?
Personally, I think that would be a good policy, or we could also leave it for a retreat, you know? But it's certainly, you know, would have been pertinent to have it ahead of tonight. But turned out fine, anyway, but, any feelings, Peter?
John, I have a, yeah, I would like to, I've been asking for this, would like to agendize a very minor zoning change to include the PDD zoning in our hillside area overlay zone, because currently, there is a little bit of a loophole that's been on the books for a while, where the PDD zones are not explicitly named as being subject to the hillside area overlay zone, and I'd like to close that gap, so to speak.
So, it goes to the planning commission this month, and then we'll come to the council either in September, October?
Okay, great.
Yeah, I would support that also, very much.
Thanks, good to hear, good to hear. It's in the hopper.
Okay. Hearing, that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, good. And with that information, I would like to adjourn in memory of Dolores Helen Gheringelli Forni, sorry, I'm reading it off of, Dolores Helen, formerly Gheringelli Forni was her last name, and Rita Vanny, also Toni Morrison, who did not live in Fairfax, but is well-known through her writings to many people in Fairfax, and also many of the people in Gilroy and Dayton in El Paso, Texas. And I think it's very unfortunate, but that's where we are. So, we're adjourned. Thank you.